I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Guterres?
Present.
Commissioner Bergman?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Vice Chair Silberman?
Here.
Chair Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Now we'll move on to public comment, and public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. So is there anybody here wishing to speak on an item that is not on the posted agenda? Okay, Dimitri, would you like to come up? Yes, please.
I'm sure you guys have it on file. I'm actually here to comment and discuss the Eastside Connect.
Thank you.
Eastside Connect.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That's what I'm... And I actually had some slides. I don't know if that will be possible to copy them or just some documents. It'll be helpful if not, I could just show you guys the screen. Yeah, I thought I did, but... Yeah, it's right here.
You can take over the mouse.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll grab it from here. All right, so I... Just minimize this for a second. I want folks to... I used to work for this company. This is really annoying. Okay. Boy, my timing's impeccable. That's one thing I've got to say. Nice to meet, see the Planning Commission. Haven't seen you guys for a while.
I know, we've missed you.
Yeah, okay. Great. I appreciate that. I'm here to talk about the Eastside Connect project, and I had a question to start the discussion off with. Where is the loading and unloading of passengers to city staff for the new Eastside Connect?
Passengers for the shuttles would be to the north of the taxi area that's there now. So that area would be bulbed out right behind the station, and then directly to the north would be the new shuttle area.
So could you provide a street location? I just want to make sure I'm not reading the document.
Toward Holly Street. More toward Holly.
Okay, yeah. That's what I thought. So let me actually open this puppy up. So, yeah, this is where I saw it this morning, the shuttle bus pickup drop-off area right off of McHugh.
Yeah, that's correct.
I just wanted to make sure that I had that right. Okay, great. So I've got some... Many of you may know or may not know that I was on the steering committee for Eastside Connect. And as a representative for the Eastside community, I brought up a number of longstanding issues associated with this project. And just give me a sec, I'll boot up the proper document here. The thing that really has me concerned about Eastside Connect and given the traffic study that was done is that this is the drop-off and pick-off location for the shuttles. And if you guys look at your pockets, you would see that... Don't say I don't come prepared. You would see that... I've got pictures, you know, I've got the whole thing. Yeah, here we go. You'd see that in the mornings, the shuttles come up Holly Street... Currently, in the current schedule, and this is what the traffic study is based off. The shuttles come up Holly Street, turn on Old County, do their drop-off, pick-off dance, which I'll discuss in a minute later, go down San Carlos Avenue, do a loop. And then in the afternoon, to bypass traffic on Holly Street, they turn left on Industrial, go up San Carlos Avenue, cut down, down to Branston, and go around. Right? So they do two different routes, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, to avoid traffic on Holly Street. Now, the traffic study, however, didn't look at any alternative locations. All they did was, for the morning, go up Holly, cut across El Camino, flip a U-turn, go into where the new location would be. Or the old one, I'm not sure if they were putting that in with the new plans or if this is where the current location is. And then in the afternoon, going up Holly Street. So it's a comparison of apples to oranges. When they talk about the times and the increase in times, in one instance, the shuttles are avoiding the traffic, and the other, they're right in the traffic. So the question I have is, why didn't we look at alternate routes? You could hit right on Industrial and go up...
Taylor.
Taylor. Or you could go this way and go up to Britton, and then go down, and then hit right. So you wouldn't even have to flip a U-turn. So there are multiple other ways of doing it. This traffic study did not show that. So I'm very concerned about that, given that the recommendation... I believe the recommendation was to not move the shuttles to the west side, based off of this traffic study. Is that correct, Mr. Sivay?
I don't think there was a recommendation.
Okay. Well, I just want to point this out, in case indeed there is a recommendation to do it that way. So really, this traffic study, and I don't... Did the city pay for this or sponsor this? Did Samtrans do this? I'm curious.
If you could perhaps ask the speaker to direct the questions to the chair of the commission, and then...
Oh, okay.
Maybe a series of questions could be answered at the end.
That's what I was thinking, that maybe after Dimitri is finished, we can go ahead and answer those questions for you.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm curious about who did this study. So if we don't change this, here's the part that I'm concerned about, and this might start segueing into the... Well, actually, it doesn't segue into Transit Village whatsoever. This is Eastside Connect, pure and simple. I spent my time looking at this. So let me start reading off my bullet points. So I brought up the current routes, and we verified with staff that the current pickup and drop-off location is by McHugh Street. Now, the question I have is, if we don't change these routes, the drop-off, pick-off is over here, yet in the afternoons, the shuttles will be avoiding that area. It seems like a serious omission in planning for Eastside Connect. Now, I'd like to say that this is a new issue. However, I did bring this up. I asked city staff to provide documents. This is the first time I've saw them. And I'm concerned, you know, about it, that a local representative of the community, who was part of the steering committee, because I'm positioning for something that's outside of the, you know, what staff and Samtrans seem to want, that that feedback is getting ignored, that has serious ramifications and concerns on my part. So let me keep going. So where are folks going to get... We keep these current routes, where are folks going to go in the afternoon? For Eastside Connect, there's no room. So let me... I actually have my bullet points here, so you guys can kind of see. So I'm very concerned about safety and safety hazards, and I don't recall any environmental review or traffic review of Eastside Connect and the impact of shuttles and the narrowing of lanes. So let's go over this real quick. Shuttle traffic study only included Redwood Shore shuttles. It didn't include Samtrans shuttles to Belmont or any other shuttles. I'm not aware of all the shuttles. So it was a sub-sampling that didn't reflect a true picture. Alternate routes didn't bypass Holly. We talked about that, apples-to-oranges comparison. Study didn't include the routes to bypass Holly to Britton or Taylor, so this three-to-five-minute increase is really an unfair comparison. So I'm concerned about safety. Eastside Connect is going to narrow lanes from 19 to 22 feet, as they currently are. Here's one example of 20 and 1/2 feet, and 19 feet on this side. In some places, it's 22 feet. Down to 11 feet. Some places, 12 feet. And the purpose of this, which I completely agree with as someone who crosses this street on a daily basis, is to throttle the traffic down, right? That's one of the goals of this. But what's scary about it is that, here, you can take a look, and you can see, there's 11 feet on each side now. And on San Carlos Avenue, because I also looked at the subsection there, there's no drop-off on East San Carlos and no room there. There's 12 feet of lanes, 12 feet and 10-foot traffic lanes. Excuse me, actually, I guess currently, it's 12 feet. And then in the new one, it's going to be 10 feet. So that's even narrower. So we have shuttles going here. We're trying to get bikes to go up and down here. We don't have a separate bike lane. We have a bike boulevard, so it's just a stencil of a bicyclist. I'm concerned that that stencil is going to be taken by the truck drivers and cars that drive down there as an invitation to hit the cyclist instead of avoiding them. That's humor. Don't all laugh at once. All right. So I'm concerned about the shuttle review. There was... And the fact that it's part of the packet, it really should have been part of the EIR. And now we have these separate traffic studies without an environmental review and no public notification of them. So this feels to me that staff is making a conscious choice to not share the negative impacts with the affected community or to the representative for that affected community. But they're willing to share this stuff to you guys in a 300-page document without any real due process. So here are my questions to the chair. Where was the environmental review? Who did the study? Why weren't all of the shuttle routes taken into consideration? Why did we not have alternate routes that bypassed the Holly traffic situation that's current? And I'm concerned about this big impact of narrowing the lanes from 22 to 11 feet. There's been no discussion about that. And as someone on the steering committee, this has me very concerned. Given this information, given the fact that we're going to have things like bike boxes, that was one of the last discussions, where there's a, you know, there's a kind of... You can see what... There's a picture from the thing where the cyclists are actually part of the lane, right? We're now trying to put shuttles, cyclists, cars. Now, let me tell you why I feel this is such a significant safety concern. Since, you know, as a resident, I walk back and forth, and I have a nice iPhone. I'm not plugging that company. I also used to work for. But, you know...
I'm just wondering... I'm sorry, I don't need to...
No, it's okay.
But I'm wondering if this is an issue that we should be talking about, maybe we should agendize it? I mean, this is getting kind of...
I'm almost done. I just have a few pictures here. A picture tells a thousand words. And I know, Mr. Silbermann, you were against moving the shuttles, but I just want to show you.
I don't remember.
Okay. I just want to show you guys a couple of pictures, because a picture's worth a thousand words.
No, that's a good point. Is this something that we should agendize at a later point, Al, or is this something that we should continue? Because it's an important topic. I want to give it its appropriate due.
Yeah, I think there's two separate issues being discussed by the speaker. One is the Eastside Connect project, and the other is shuttles and routes. And I think the idea of shuttles is part of the discussion that we can have as part of the Transit Village project, and we're prepared to do that. The Eastside Connect project is going to start construction this month. It's been approved by our city council. We've got a contract with a contractor to do the project, and it's moving forward. So the, you know, whether the engineering was appropriate or not is a foregone conclusion. City staff believes that the way it was designed is the correct way for a number of different technical and safety reasons. So, Eastside Connect, what we can do is get Mr. Vandelos with our city engineer, Matt Lee, to talk about the Eastside Connect project and the engineering specifications and issues on the Eastside Connect construction project. On the shuttle issue, we can talk about that tonight. If there's things like, I heard things about alternate routes for travel, location of the drop-off area is something that kind of goes across both the Eastside Connect and Transit Village project, but really, we can talk about that, too. And then SEQA is a... If it's SEQA for the Eastside Connect project, that, again, separate, that's all done. So again, from the engineering standpoint, we can get them the proper information, and from the shuttle routes and whether to move it to the east or the west or leave it where it is, we can talk about that tonight later as part of the Transit Village.
So would that be more appropriate than during public comment about the PD plan for Transit Village, or should Dimitri continue at this point?
Well, he's pretty far down. He's almost concluded his presentation.
I'm almost standing here.
It's, you know, now we know some of the issues, so the speakers, other speakers and staff can be prepared to answer those questions later. Perhaps this information doesn't need to be shared again, since it's been shared now.
Okay.
All right. So real quickly, these are just random samplings of walking across the street when I run my iPhone and I take a picture. This is a typical thing that happens. Here's the shuttle. You can see that it's blocking the traffic. And they're actually... There's nothing behind them. They just don't pull in. This happens to be a Samtrans shuttle. Here's another shuttle pulling up into the red zone. This is, again, a daily occurrence, not leaving enough room for cars. Again, from another angle, another day, shuttle blocking the traffic there. You can see a car in the way. And remember that we will throttle this down as part of Eastside Connect. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Sivay that the shuttles are not linked to Eastside Connect. That was a big part of it. Shuttles and traffic mitigations were part of Eastside Connect. I was on the steering committee. I also have to respectfully disagree, because I asked to have those meetings many, many months ago, several times, to Mr. Sivay and to the city manager, Jeff Malphy, and was ignored. Just really, really quick. Here's another example of an EA shuttle. I don't know if this is sponsored by Samtrans or not. You can see they're a good foot, maybe two feet away from the curb. Here's an example of a car. I took this picture when my wife was driving. You can see that it's blocking the traffic. There really is no room. It's creating a big safety issue, and we're also throttling this down, you know, to an 11-foot lane for cars. Here's another example. This was... I took my life into my hands here. You can see a car pulling in across the double-yellow line to cross. So I just want to make sure you guys see this, this guy. Here's a picture during one of the walkabouts. This is Brian Fitzpatrick, I believe, and a former Planning Commission member, in front of a shuttle that did not pull across. I found that to be an interesting moment, so I moved back a little bit and noticed there were no cars in the way. The representative for Samtrans was ignoring the situation. As a matter of fact, multiple occasions in this hall to the Planning Commission, he said he's never heard of any issues, and he was seeing them. There's a third picture. Hey, there you are. And basically, you know, here's another example now. This is even scarier, a shuttle going over... This is on the same day. This was during rush hour, and a bunch of folks were here witnessing it, the shuttle going across the yellow line because a Caltrain shuttle was blocking. So I'll table... I have Transit Village feedback, but I just wanted to make sure you guys saw that independently and would understand the gravity of the situation, why the community has been adamant about moving these shuttles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Through the chair. Are we allowed to ask staff questions about this?
Staff?
This is an example of public comment. So we can... That's where we would agendize something to ask questions of staff. Public comment, the reason we don't advise having a Q and A on public comment is many times, issues are raised that staff is not completely prepared to respond to. It's not on the posted agenda as an item that the public would know would be discussed. And so we really would need to agendize it for something else. And, you know, public comment is for the public to speak, so I, you know, I'm not going to stop the public speakers from speaking during the public comment period, but it's really not appropriate to have a Q and A or really discuss the item or the issues raised. That needs to come back at a future meeting.
But we can ask it to be agendized at a future meeting.
Absolutely, you can do that.
So can I make comments that pertain to additional things that should be looked at as part of that item when it comes back?
Through the chair. Again, I think that the shuttle issue, there's a report in your staff report, an attachment that was done by the city's consultant. Also, we actually shared the consultant. And we're prepared to answer questions about that study this evening. We have representatives of Samtrans here that can talk about shuttles. I can talk a little bit about shuttles. But the Eastside Connect project, we really aren't prepared to talk about.
Okay.
Does that answer your question for now?
I'll just ask the questions as part of the other project.
Great.
Terrific, thank you. Is anybody else here to speak and public comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, I do have one. Karen Clapper couldn't be here this evening, and she requested that I read this, so I'm going to do so. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My apologies for not being able to present my comments in person. I wish to welcome your newest member, Shannon Bergman. Welcome. And thank Angela, David, Scott, and Jesse for their ongoing service on the commission. I hope you will forgive my indulgence in using your first names and bypassing the typical formality of addressing commissioners by title and last names. I want to recognize your individual investment of time and energy as a commissioner on behalf of the community. On a more formal note, I am the council's liaison with the Planning Commission, and while you won't see me at many of your meetings, I watch every meeting and am available as a resource to any of you on the commission. Thank you for your community service. And that's from Karen Clapper. Okay. Seeing no other speaker cards for public comment, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. Do any of the commissioners have any changes or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, can I entertain a motion?
I move approval. And I'd also just like to observe, these minutes were really, really good. It was a complicated meeting with a lot of things going on, and they kept it short and sweet and captured everything. Whoever wrote them, kudos.
Second.
I agree. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Opposed, I guess abstention, Shannon?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Well, we are going to go ahead and move on to the public hearing for item A, which is the Transit Village Plan Development. And I want to go ahead and go over the procedure for the public hearing. First, the staff will present a report on the history of physical features and so on, followed by the staff's recommendation. Then the applicant will go ahead and make a presentation. At that point, I'm going to ask that the planning commissioners ask any clarifying questions you have of staff or the applicant. Just quick clarifying questions. Then we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment, where we're going to hear from the community and solicit public feedback. After public comment is finished, then I will go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We're going to have commissioners ask questions at that point and go ahead and deliberate on the item on the agenda. I'm going to go ahead and save my preface for the public session a little bit later, but I will say this. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only the issues that were raised in public comment by somebody else or by you, or comments that were given by written correspondence and delivered to the council prior to the hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker form, which is here, found on the door, and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up and address the microphone and speak, since the meeting is being recorded. I will give everybody a warning that the speakers are going to be limited to three minutes, and we do ask that you honor that time limit and that you direct your comments and questions to the commission. Okay? So let's go ahead and go on with item A and start with the staff presentation. I understand, Colette, you're going to come up and speak.
Chair, Harper-Peterson. Before we do that, is there anyone who'd like to make a declaration as far as meetings or information? I know I would like to say that I've met with Legacy since the last meeting. I've met with... I've talked with Brian at Samtrans, and I've met and had conversations with many people from the east side and throughout San Carlos.
Yeah, sorry about that. I should have asked about any expertise communications before starting the presentation. Would anybody else like to disclose any expertise communication?
Nobody likes to talk to me, apparently. I had a brief conversation with an attorney at Hanson Bridget, who represents Samtrans, and I've spoken to a few community members here and there.
I have also spoken to community members of both the east and west side about the project since our last meeting. Thanks, Scott. Okay, Colette?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Colette Manier. I'm a consulting project planner, assisting the city with the processing of the entitlements. I'm going to make my presentation very short, not go over all of the history, but just focus on how the recommendation that is included in your packet and the conditions interact with the issues and interact with the project design. So I'm going to talk briefly, just to orient us all to the project, talk about the benefits of the project, the aspects that require flexibility through the use of the plan development tool, the conditions that change the project, and just briefly go over the improvement measures and the mediation, the issues that came up through the mediation process, and conclude by looking at the actions that are before you tonight and what the next steps would be. So this is an overview of the project. There has been a change since it was last before you, even in the study session in June. Working with the applicant, the southerly part of the rail corridor is included as part of the plan development. So we basically have three components now in the plan development. The mixed-use project, the eight new buildings, and the depot remains not a part of the plan development. It will continue to be part of the Caltrain right-of-way. It's not changing. It still is the focal point of the development, but since there are no changes in it, and it really is a key component of the Caltrain operation, it's adjacent to you but not part of the plan development. The second part of the project is the new relocated multimodal station, which is primarily the commuter parking lot. And again, the south rail corridor is included in part of the master plan, as is required by the policy direction in Council Resolution 200379. No development is proposed in this area, and no changes in development standards or land use controls are proposed at this time. So just briefly, the project, the mixed-use project, is eight new buildings that would include 280 dwelling units and in buildings, the ground floor of Building Six and in Buildings Seven and Eight, just over 36,000 square feet of commercial space. It also includes underground parking, surface parking lots, landscaping, and a new public plaza in front of the historic depot on approximately 6.26 acres. The transit center includes a commuter parking lot, which includes 226 parking spaces at this time. There is an intention to look at extending this down as far as they can. There needs to be some retention here as part of their stormwater management, but they're looking at doing additional parking in this area. And then the last part is the south corridor. As we discussed at the study session in June, the project has changed in other ways since it was reviewed in the EIR. it was reviewed in the EIR, and that includes the reduction in the stories at the fourth floor in Buildings One through Six, the residential buildings, which has the consequence of changing the unit size and mix. There's a reduction in the commercial space in Building Six. It's been reduced in order to add one more residential unit on the ground floor in that building. And there were changes in the emergency vehicle access along here in terms of the turnouts and those sorts of things, and those were negotiated and discussed with the fire department in order, or fire district, in order to increase the landscaping on the east side of the building. The benefits that are part of this project is, first of all, a widened sidewalk, just starting here in front of Buildings One through Three. And at the entrances to the buildings, there are areas that are wider, that are landscaped, and include some street furnishings such as seating. At Holly, there is improved pedestrian crossing. There's also changes in the northbound area, removing one right turn lane and eliminating the left turn lane that comes on to Holly from the northbound direction. This area here currently is the main entrance into the parking that's provided, the commuter parking, and the cars will, the turn-in will be moved to the south to Cherry, and there will be, in some ways, connection to the plaza in terms of changes in paving and improved landscaping. And it has somewhat of the effect of focusing pedestrian and cyclist activity in a different area than where the turning motions are going into the parking lot. The median will also be reconstructed from Holly south to Arroyo, and an important part of that will be providing pedestrian refuge areas in the center for people who are crossing the road. Project proponents provided the street improvements across the frontage of the mixed-use project and the Transit Center. A proposed condition of approval would extend those improvements south from Arroyo as far south as they can go, given that there is some development at the auto-oriented uses where it wouldn't be possible to encroach into those properties at this time. The project would also include public art. Again, the initial thought is something in the plaza. Off-site, there would be additional landscaping along the railroad berm. The developer proposes to provide funding to the city, but the proposed condition of approval that addresses this would actually have the developer do the installation and the five-year maintenance. A proposed condition of approval would also require establishing a neighborhood improvement fund, which, again, one of the thoughts was some additional trees along Old County Road or street trees on the neighborhood, but there may be other ideas that will come forward for how that, those monies could be used to improve the neighborhood vis-à-vis this project. The project will also make contributions to the housing impact fund. There is an existing traffic impact fee that is being assessed to provide for the improvements to the Holly Street interchange with 101, as well as Britton Avenue at industrial and park facility fees. So those are examples of, or a listing of kind of the amenities that come with the project. How do I back up? Okay, I'd like to, I mean, there are a number of aspects of the project which are included in your staff report, and I won't go over all of them, but I'd be happy to respond to questions at the end. There are aspects of the project that don't comply with the standards. An example is there are corners, as you come along here, of the building that encroach within the 15-foot required front yard setback. Corner here, much of the buildings do comply, but there are encroachments. There are encroachments at the side yard at the street because of the, because the street doesn't just go straight, the right-of-way curves, property line comes in. These two corners do not comply with the required side yard setback. The parking lots are supposed to be set back, surface parking lots are supposed to be 40 feet back from the public right-of-way. Given the long nature, no cross streets to provide access to the rear of buildings to place parking lots at the rear and other things, that's an example of something that the plan development would allow the flexibility for. And there are other ones listed that I'm not going to go through. The conditions of approval make some changes to the property from, basically, a visual perspective. The fourth floor and the third building, the condition would require that that level be stepped back so it would match the setback from Buildings One, there are One and Two. Those have a setback from the east face of the building at the fourth story that wasn't carried forward onto Building Three. So that's a recommended condition. Between Buildings Five and Six, there are a series of walkways that connect across that are open, and then you have a separation between the building, but then you have the walkways. And even though they're open-air ones, they still provide a connection and a visual connection between those buildings, and the recommendation is that that be eliminated. There are metal awnings which provide interest and detail. The condition recommends that those be modified to be a more traditional triangular shape and more traditional materials in keeping with the residential buildings that they're being placed on. And again, in the conditions of approval, there were other areas of specific buildings for which recommendations were made, that at design review, we look at some improvements to those. Parking, the residential portion of the project provides 418 parking spaces. 353 are required. Additionally, there is on-street parking north of Holly. My estimate is that when the new driveways go in, there will probably be something like 45 parking spaces at the curb in front of those properties. The project is required to participate in a transit, transportation demand management program, and the intention of that is to reduce trips generated, which will also have an impact on parking. The specific components of the program are included in the plan development and are also in the staff report. The commercial building would require 75 spaces, and 19 are provided in the parking lot between Buildings Six and Seven. The applicant is proposing that that be addressed by the non-exclusive use of 47 short-term parking spaces in the commuter lot, short-term meaning under three hours. Also, that there would be a parking management program set up for Buildings Five and Six to make those areas available during the day to the employees of the commercial building. Because the concern is, this is transit-oriented development, parking is reduced for it, there are concerns about what if it doesn't work the way we think, and so one of the conditions of approval also includes setting up a residential parking program, of funding that to be set up, working with the neighborhood. No changes are proposed for the Transit Center. In terms of the conditions of approval, there's nothing that would change its layout. And as I mentioned earlier, for the south railroad corridor, one of the conditions requires the continuation of the streetscape south from Arroyo. Through the EIR and through the hearings that the Planning Commission held, a number of improvement measures were developed. They're just briefly shown here. I wasn't going to touch on any of them in particular because they are discussed in the staff report, but if there's something in particular at the end of my presentation, I'd be happy to respond to it. But it included mitigation measures, improvement measures, which are not necessary to reduce an impact to a less than significant level, but would improve the project, include landscaping, having a plan for the vacant rail corridor, implementing aspects of the climate action plan, ensuring that the disruption of Old County Road is held to a minimum, providing bicycle travelways within the project, design driveway five to provide an adequate storage area, particularly because it's using buses for that southbound travel movement, implementation of a part of the San Carlos Avenue improvements, and that's the improvements at the intersection northbound from Holly, which is included as part of the project, sidewalk, crosswalk improvements, transit parking lot design plan, designate commercial parking within the project, replace the lost on-street parking, and ensuring that as we move forward, sorry, Residential permit parking, which I've mentioned, implementing best management practices for noise, which has been included as a condition of approval, including noise attenuation construction for the east facade. And again, there is a letter that was presented before that, from an acoustical perspective, there hasn't been materials so identified, and including making sure that we have water conservation incorporated as part of the project. There are also issues that came out of the discussions and meetings with the community. These are from what was called the mediation matrix, and again, concerns, there are 14 concerns that they discussed, which were Old County Road, the future of the greater east San Carlos residential areas, issues of height density, shadows and light, and the impacts on the neighborhood, the issues of exposure to toxic materials during construction. And again, there are mitigation measures that are included in the conditions of approval that address how those will be, how those would be handled to avoid those kinds of impacts. Improved screening landscaping. Again, I did mention that that is part of what the developer has proposed, is some additional off-site planting along the berm. Parking spillover into the neighborhood, residential parking plan is part of a way of addressing that. Issue of the shuttles, which we've already heard a little bit about this evening, the issue of school impacts and the limitations of state law in terms of requiring the developer to make greater contributions. Improved pedestrian crossings, zip cars, providing a place for shared cars within the commuter lot, which is a condition, and improved cleanup. And there is an attachment that shows that the city, together with the Transit District, has taken a look at that and is working to make that better. Transient and safety, again, they're working on improved policing and the issue of communication, providing improved communication. There are two resolutions before you. One is, we have a certified EIR. Now we have to take that document and say, how does it inform our decision, the decision that you will make, or that you will recommend to the city council? And the mitigation measures reporting, monitoring and reporting program, how will the implementation of those measures be carried out? So you're asked to take a look at that, look at the findings, look at the mitigation plan and recommend it to council. And secondly, make recommendations, including the conditions of approval, to the city council for the approval of the plan development. The next steps in this process would be action by the city council, and if the project was approved by city council, there would be additional planning approvals. They would be more focused in scope, do design review, we'd be taking the design direction from the plan development approval and looking at, as the more detailed plans are developed for the mixed-use project or for the Transit Center, making sure those were implemented. Parcel map, grading, tree removal permits, those sorts of things. Once those were granted, then there would be also construction permits, like grading permits, building permits, and the regional permits that are mentioned in the report. That's my presentation, and I'd be pleased to respond to any questions now or later after the public hearing.
Thank you, Colette. Does anybody have any questions for Colette at this point?
What do you prefer as far, I mean, I have questions about parking. I can leave them till later. I can do them now. I don't really have any preferences.
I think I'd prefer that the applicant go ahead and make their presentation in case it answers any of your questions.
Okay.
Can I clarify one thing? Okay. So I sat here and listened to your list of benefits to the community. So I heard wider sidewalks, I heard improved pedestrian crossing, I heard the plaza, oh, by the way, the improved pedestrian crossings, those are actually removing turning lanes, which are maybe an issue with traffic on El Camino and getting people into and out of the community. So I'm not sure that pedestrian crossings are really a benefit. Street improvement, which to me is actually something that's a requirement of the thing, so it's not really an improve, it's not really a benefit. The same with the sidewalks. The plaza already exists, it's just going to be beautified a little bit. Public art, so that to me is sort of really the first benefit of the project. Off-site landscaping, I don't think that that's really a benefit. I think that's more of a mitigation. A neighborhood improvement fund, that may be a little bit of a benefit, we'll have to see. And then the requirement that they pay the housing traffic and, the housing traffic and parking fees. None of those is actually a benefit. Those are all things that are sort of a requirement by the city. So honestly, when you listed that list of benefits, I don't really see any benefits to the community. So I'm just curious if there's something I'm missing.
I guess what I was thinking is if we have no project, none of those things then come forward. You don't get those improvements. So that's what I was comparing it to.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they're not, they're not really benefits. They're aspects of the project that are required as part of the project. Thank you.
I think that's understood. Any other clarifying questions for Colette at this point? Okay, thank you, Colette.
Thank you very much.
Understand that Legacy would like to make a presentation. Sherry, or you're going to lead this? Okay, great, come on up.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and giving us the opportunity to present the project to you again, and for some of you for the first time. What we'd like to do is present the project, there's actually three presenters, myself, Sherry Scott with Cristiani Johnson Architects, the architect for the project. We have Brian Fitzpatrick from Sam Trans, a representative, to talk about the multimodal station. And then we also have our landscape architect, Paul Luteri, from the Gazardo Partnership, to talk about the landscape elements of the project as well. And so I think we'll start with the overview of the Transit Center, and I'm going to have Brian Fitzpatrick come up for that portion of the presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Commission. Brian Fitzpatrick, I'm the manager of real estate and property development for Sam Trans, the San Mateo County Transit District, who is the owner of the property on which this development is being constructed. I'm kicking off the meeting simply because I think there's only a couple of us who have been around since the very beginning of this, and I was telling Commissioner Marsters earlier today that I think he and I have been today that I think he and I have been, you know, sort of around from the, from the same meetings at the very beginning, I predated the developer, predated, you know, the majority of city staff, so I think I can bring a somewhat unique perspective to this. Some of the stuff that I'm telling you may be things that you've heard from me before, but for the benefit of having it on the record and have everybody sort of understanding the underpinnings of where we are, I thought it would be prudent just to give a quick overview of that. So, the land that we're talking about, and I won't describe where it is, because I think we all know where it is, but the land that we're talking about was land that was purchased by the San Mateo County Transportation Authority as the land on which the grade separation project was going to be constructed. The grade separation project was called the Ralston Holly Harbor Grade Separation Project, and the project was built by the City of San Carlos and the City of Belmont as a partnership. That was funded by money from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority as well as other sources. One of the contributions to that property was the land, and as some of you may recall, the reason that this land was purchased was because in order to grade-separate the railroad, you had to move the track onto a different at-grade alignment that was to the west of the current alignment, build up the grade separation while running the trains on that, what we call a shoe fly, and then when the grade separation was done, the trains were moved up onto the berm, the shoe fly was removed, and then we had this vacant land there. There had been businesses displaced to accommodate that construction methodology. So that happened in the, in the late 90s. I came to the agency at SAM Trans in, in late 2000, and one of the first things I was involved in is the early period of 2001, the city, and as you all know, the reason you guys are sitting on the Planning Commission, the city is the entity that determines the appropriate land use for this piece of land and all other pieces of land in the city, and that's done through a, you know, a series of things, including, you know, having a general plan for the city and specific zoning ordinances. The city in 2001, I believe they had done it once before too, but in 2001, when I was on board, they put together a 32-person committee, they had a wide range of people from different parts of your community, and they sat down and they said, what are our goals and objectives for this land that's out here, this vacant railroad corridor land? And so this committee came together, there were a number of meetings, culminating in two resolutions that were adopted in 2003, that ended up amending the west side specific plan for this area with a series basically of goals and objectives for the development of this site. So the city initiated the process, it said, where do we want this land to be, as is appropriate? Because the city determines what happens on this land. So, I participated in, in those meetings and was privy to those discussions, and in June 2004, our agency SAM Trans issued a request for statement of qualifications for the development of this site, for purposes of what we're saying, let's just call it an RFP, we ask for proposals to develop the site. And what we did in that set of proposals is we set a bunch of goals for what we wanted to see the developer bring to the table. One of those goals was a consistency with the city's vision for this site, and the city's vision for that site was codified in these two resolutions, that were actually part of the RFP, referred to in the RFP, all the planning background documentation was listed as a reference document in the RFP that the developers would go back to, developers, of course, wanting to know what the community wants to see before coming in with some plan completely out of the blue. The selection panel for the selection of the developer included SAM Trans staff as well as city staff, and we got in seven proposals, the city sat on our selection committee, and the developer we chose was Legacy. And just to give you an idea why we chose Legacy, the second-best proposal we received was a 453-unit proposal for the site, Legacy's was 320. We felt that Legacy coming in had a much better idea of what the City of San Carlos was looking for, the look and feel of the town, what would work in that area. So right out of the bat, that was a selection that, that was made, again, with city staff on board. So I think it's important to note with this background that Legacy just didn't walk into this town, come in and put down a plan that, that they came up with, they looked at reference documents that are based on what the city said it wanted to see there, and I think if you go back and you look at those resolutions and you look at what Legacy has submitted, you'll see that the two things are eerily similar by design. So the next question I think that's come up a lot in, in this community and in these, in these meetings, and a variety of meetings that I've been involved in in the last, you know, 10 years, is what is SAM Trans' goals? What's SAM Trans' vision for this, for this site? You know, why, why are we involved in this? Why are we involved in developing this property? And I think one of the things that's really interesting to note when you, when you get into sort of the egghead end of, of transit planning, is, you know, transit operators take people from point A to point B, you know, point A being Gilroy or San Jose, point being, B being San Francisco, and all the sub-points in between. We've got a fixed route system that goes up and down the train tracks, there's not room for deviation, I can't pull off and drop somebody off at their house. What that means is these last-mile connections, or the connections that get you to and from the fixed point where you pick up the train, are extremely valuable, they're extremely valuable at getting people on and off transit. And one of the things that SAM Trans envisions, when, when our general manager first came to SAM Trans, he looked out his window, looked right down on that site, and he said, you know, we need to bring the riders to us, we can bring people who drive cars down here, we can bring people who ride their bikes down here, we can have a variety of modes of access, if you will, but if we're bringing riders directly to the train, we're getting people out of their cars, getting them directly onto transit, we're making a real big difference in, in getting people to the transit station. It's important to note that at your station, you have about 700 riders a day, you have about 226 parking spots, about 85 of those people drive, so we already have the majority of people getting on this train without driving, we're bringing more people down here, we're getting people out of their cars, eliminating greenhouse gases, doing a variety of things that are going to make, you know, transit better, that are going to connect your community better to the rest of the peninsula by, by bringing this in. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, why anybody would want to live next to the train. In our view, this provides housing choice, you know, by virtue of building this project, nobody is going up to somebody who lives in the hills or somebody who lives in the greater east side of San Carlos and saying, you must move next to the train tracks. But what it does is it provides an opportunity for people to live there, people who maybe want to have a direct connection to San Francisco. If you get on Caltrain and you get on an express train, you're about 30 minutes from San Francisco, you can make an argument that you're probably closer to downtown San Francisco than somebody who lives in the outer reaches of the Richmond District, like I used to back in, back in the 90s. So we're creating housing choice next to transit, creating connectivity. San Carlos has a great downtown, so you don't have an, if you live there, you're connected to downtown, you're connected to transit. If you go up and down the peninsula and you look at the number of cities that have a transit center as close to a vibrant downtown as San Carlos does, there are very few of them, and I would argue that most of them are the best cities on the peninsula, Palo Alto, Burlingame, San Mateo, Redwood City, San Carlos, these are the areas that have this unique feel. That's why people will choose to live in a place like this, choose to be near transit. We want to provide that, we want to help the city and the community provide that. I asked Sherry to, to help me out by putting this picture up here, because I'm apparently better at being shown on the screen than am in manipulating the screen, I couldn't have got this up myself. But the, the little, let me see, can I try this? Oh, okay. So this area right here, this is a historic depot, this area right here is the, the plaza that's going to be part of this development. I ride the train three days a week, or at least I try to, and when you get off the train in San Carlos, if you've done this on a regular basis, when you're walking through the area that will be the plaza, right now, this is the entryway to the station, we have buses, shuttles, cars, pedestrians, bikes, everybody competing to come in that, in that one area. When we do this project, we're going to create a pedestrian-only area, we're going to say pedestrians can only come through this area, we're going to move cars, buses, trucks, anything else down to the New Cherry Street intersection, so we're separating these two things, we're creating a better walking environment, not only for the people who will live right next to the station and access this, but for the rest of us who come from downtown San Carlos and other places west, we're going to have a much better, much safer, much more pedestrian-friendly crossing to get into this train station, we're connecting it better to the fabric of the, of the community. This walkway that's going to be constructed down here in El Camino Real, we're not making El Camino Real less wide, it will be just as wide, but we're bridging the gap by creating a paving situation in El Camino Real that's going to make it aware that this is a pedestrian crossing, this is where people are going to cross, this makes it safer. So effectively, what are we doing? We're connecting our transit center to your great downtown, and we're making it safer for people to cross El Camino by effectively making El Camino smaller with this creative design that we're choosing, and when you get to the other side of the road, you're not going to be worrying about cars, buses, trucks. So we're pulling transit and downtown, we're connecting them with this project, that's a vital, vital component to the health of any transit system. As part of this project, I like to tell people, and this is part of Al Savay's vision, actually, you know, when we first started this project, Al came up to me and he said, Brian, we have a parking lot, I want a transit center, and what you do have now is you have a parking lot. If you go out to the San Carlos parking lot at any time during the day, or most times during the day, you'll see full-size buses parked in the north side transit, taking up three or four car spaces. It's because buses don't have any place to stay when they're not running. You will see shuttles, when they do access on the west side, you'll see them stopping in the red zone in front of the Depot Cafe. Again, it's because there's no dedicated space for that, that, there's not area in there for it, it's not dedicated that way, it's got 226 spaces that are maximized to put the most spaces in the area that they're in. When this project is done, you're going to have a full-blown transit center. One of the things I like to point out here is this double-loaded kiss-and-ride area. People are going to be able to have a drop-off area, right now it's an ad hoc drop-off, you drop off in the red zone, you stop in an unused parking spot, you drop off your people. Here you're going to have a full-blown kiss-and-ride, cars, shuttles, buses, whatever can use that area to drop off. As an aside, at night, if it turns out that there's some kind of a nightlife opportunity around here, it could be, it could become an area for valet parking, but during the day, full transit functionality in this brand-new transit center. We're going to have areas where buses can stop inside the station, as you see there, and we're going to continue to use the stop at the other end, so that we have the full opportunity to provide the full range of transit services, both as we envision it today, and hopefully giving you some flexibility for the future. So you're getting a full-blown, modern transit center here, again, you know, Al's vision, Al insisting that we do this right, and I think we have. You're connecting the east side of San Carlos to the west side of San Carlos, you're coming through the station, you're shortening the gap between here, you're creating an active, vibrant space in the area that connects these two portions of your community. You're going to have people, you're going to have density in these areas, you're going to have people walking around there at night, you're not going to have a vacant, you know, piece of land down the community, you're going to have connection and cohesion in these areas. Safety is, is created by having people in the area. You know, the other great, you know, saying is, is rooftops, you know, drive retail, right? You're going to have people out here, you're going to have more people visiting your downtown, you're going to have more choice to have great restaurants, you're going to have more choice for opportunity because we're getting more people here, we're making a great downtown even better. Finally, you know, out of my six reasons why SAM Trans is doing this, we've got a long, vacant piece of land. We had to move the businesses that were on that site in order to create the grade separation. You know, they, they can't coexist, you can't have a train running down the middle of a lumberyard. But now we have an opportunity to put something here, to put the right thing here, to do something that makes sense for your community, makes sense for transit, and, and in my personal view, I think that we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. You know, you come in and you put $120 million project on this site, we better make sure we build the right thing, because we're not going to have an opportunity 10 years from now to look ourselves in the mirror and say, should have been seven stories, you know, should have been a bigger project. We have, we have the opportunity to get the right project of the right size in this area, and, and we want to, we want to see this community, and we want to help this community to make a decision that works for it, make it, make it the right thing, so that when we look back, we say, we built that project, it was a right project to build there, whatever it ends up being, let's hope we do the right thing. Finally, we talk about the roles of everybody in this project, and this development is somewhat confusing, because we don't have a typical landowner, and then a typical, you know, developer, and, and a city, it's, it's a little different, we've got a transit agency, we're a public agency, just as the city's a public entity. I've said before, and I'll say it again, one of the advantages of that is, we're going to be a project partner in this project for 99 years, we have a 99-year land lease, we're unique, maybe to, you know, pick a name, Chevron, who happens to own this land, right? We're going to be here, we're entering into a land lease with Legacy, we'll have a partnership with him from now for 99 years. Because of that, we do some things differently. We have a clause in our lease with Legacy that basically says, you will build this project to a certain standard. We have reference projects, we went out with Legacy and we saw some other projects they've built, beautiful projects, we wrote that your project will be built to this quality. Doesn't mean it's going to look like what might work in San Jose, doesn't mean it's going to function like that, doesn't mean it's going to be the same height, but the quality, the amenities, the finishings, those things will be of a certain quality, because we're going to be here for 99 years, we're partnering with you guys, we want to make sure this is a quality project, so there's an advantage in having us be here. But let's talk a little bit about the role. When we create this, there's basically a triangle that's going on here, it's a three-legged triangle with the three partners in this project, and those partners are the public agency SAM Trans, the private developer Legacy, and the city, and it's a triangle, and we're going to work together to make the best possible project, do it as well as we can. In this relationship, every one of these entities needs to do what it's best prone to do. For example, we brought Legacy on board, and we brought a private developer on board, because what do private developers know how to do? They know how to access the financial markets, they know how to get funding for these projects, they know what works and what doesn't work, they know, you know, what the appropriate expense to potential revenue relationship is to make sure that a project is financially feasible and can get built, they know all those things, that's their, that's their sweet spot. So Legacy is responsible for all those things in this triangle, that's their leg. SAM Trans, we're transit experts, we do transit, so when it comes to talking about what this transit center is going to look like, how that's going to be designed, how that's going to be built, we're building it, we're, we're doing that, we're taking the lead on it, we've got a team of people who know shuttles, who know buses, who know trains, working with us to make sure we do that right. And then the third leg of this, and the most important one, is the city, you know, tying this all together, what I said in the beginning, is that the city is going to determine what works best for the city, that's your role, that's why you set zoning policy, general plans, specific area plans, these other things, the city does that. And the city's goal, of course, is to build a project that meets its goals and objectives in, in the best possible way, you guys have the authority over that project, and that's your role. So we're all working together here in our own little way to do this project, little different than you might normally see, but that's the, that's the relationship, and it's, it's my goal that we're going to do that and, and make a development that's appropriate. So I'll be here to answer any questions that you may have, but, you know, I really hope to see this project continue and to, to make a project that is as positive as, as I see that it can be out here. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Do you want us to address each one individually, or would you like us to wait till the end for, and bring them back up to answer the questions?
Can we wait till the end? Thank you. Sherry?
So we're going to focus first on the, on the actual depot area, the retail buildings flanking the plaza, and then the plaza itself. I think, you know, you've, you've seen us talk about the plaza in several presentations before, and I think it's important for us to keep coming back here, because I think it's, it's, it really is a tremendous change from what's there now, and I think it is a, a great benefit to, not just to the residential community, but to the greater city of San There's two retail buildings architecturally that flank this plaza, and we've designed the buildings to step back away from the depot and plan to maintain view angles here. They also step back in elevation and height as well, to scale down towards this existing depot building. So the intent here is to really frame this space, really make it a, kind of embrace it with, with two arms, which are the two retail buildings, and so I think we've hit at the right proportion, the right height to protect the space, but not loom over the, the plaza space. These two retail buildings- These two retail buildings also, I think they respect the material and scale of the depot, but we're not copying it. I'll show you some images a little bit later of the retail buildings, but the intent is to be respectful of the existing depot without just mimicking it as a one-off. And then, Paul, would you talk about the plaza a little bit?
Sure. We're going to do this back and forth, I think, as we did the last time. Paul Littori, Gazzardo Partnership, for the record. Yes, one of the things we're trying to do with the plaza is actually create a really vibrant spot that is, that's really for people to use. And we're trying to make it as sort of unprogrammed as possible, so that we're not directing how it gets used. We're allowing for a lot of different possibilities to happen in it. We showed some examples of things that could happen last time. We've tried to, you know, alter the drawing a little bit, so it's less directional in terms of how it might, how it might work. So one of the things that we're doing is, you know, we're saving the large tree that is in the, between the buildings now, and we're moving the palms that are now flanking the building out into a fourth square that defines a fountain that is out on the street, on the street edge of the plaza. Little yellowish boxes you see are sort of seat-height stone plinths that are made of a material similar to the depot building itself. So you can sit on all of those if you like. They're at various heights as the, as the grades of the plaza are different, but they're generally, you know, sitable. And then we've allowed a pattern that runs through that ties the buildings together and ties the colonnades together. The sort of reddish rendered color you see is, is area that's next to the buildings that we think that if restaurants occur, that's where the outdoor dining could happen. And we've sort of differentiated them with paving for the moment. You can also, the little, the little shapes that are out here are tables notionally that would not necessarily be built in. That's, that's something that could happen in the plaza as it, as it is used. And then, and then the ability to circulate freely through to get to, get to the train, which is one of the significant aspects of the plaza itself, is preserved by the design we have. And good, strong connections to the, to the crosswalks that would go across El Camino. I think that's probably enough for now. Take it back. Oh, yeah. Okay.
So architecturally, I'll just point out that this is the retail building seven. This is just north of the existing depot building here. So we are using similar materials. We have some stone accents. You can see here how the building steps down in height from two stories down to one story as it approaches the depot building, as well as, again, stepping back in plan to drop the scale as we get towards the depot here. We have, on the two retail buildings, we have a copper patina-colored metal roof, which would distinguish it from the residential project that's further to the north. And so there's a different character to the buildings that are going to surround the depot and surround this plaza than the residential portion.
Yeah, this is a little bit closer in, a little bit closer in view, looking, looking north again. Similar, similar view to what you saw before, just a little closer now, sort of from a pedestrian's perspective. So these are the plinths that you could, you can sit on, fountain edge. And I think it's important just to see that plaza's open and visible. So if you drive by, it's visible. If you walk by, it's visible. If you cycle by, it's visible. And we think it makes, it also helps to make it kind of a central focus, since it is at the, you know, end of the, end of the street as a terminus as well. I think removing, removing the cars from it, we think is really, you know, a really, really important aspect of, of making it a place that people can use and making it active. Wrong way.
So the inspiration for the design context, the city's general plan talks a little bit about this, about design context and inspiration for, in the city of San Carlos. So the train depot, we've already talked about. The Drake buildings across the street, which also has some great sort of mission-style details. The residential project that's probably most similar in style is the Pacific Hostienda, which is a project that the planning staff has definitely directed us towards in terms of a successful articulation with some traditional mission-style detailing in a contemporary project. And so these are projects that we've looked to for design inspiration for our project. So the residential building, it does have some, it's a mission-style influence. This could be largely plaster with some stone accents. There's a variety of heights and roof forms, I think, that creates a vibrancy along the streetscape. This is actually building four, but it's a typical, in terms of material and color, for the rest of the residential buildings. Again, the commercial buildings would have metal roof, copper patina color, different character of stone. The stone on the retail buildings would be more cut and refined, a little bit more rustic towards the residential, again distinguishing between the two palettes for the different types of uses there. And a little bit more vibrant color palette with the copper patina and the brighter plaster color at the retail buildings. This is a view of the residential buildings from, this is the corner of Holly Street in El Camino. And so we've also brought the stone accents here. This is more the rustic stone that's going to be on the residential buildings, merging in with the plaster details. We have a lot of detailing around the windows, a lot of different roof details, molding details, which bring out the sort of the mission-style character that has inspired our project. And, and again, it's, with the street trees, it's, you don't see all the variation as the project goes down El Camino Real, but the intent is to create a lively streetscape, lots of ins and outs, lots of articulation, really breaking down the building massing in height between three stories, four stories, along with the different roof forms as well.
Maybe, maybe obvious, the only landscape that's actually representational here is the trees. The ground plane has just been left plain, and the terrace planters that are at the edge here are, you know, unplanted in this picture, because it's really about the architecture. Just for clarity, that's all.
That's true.
The sensitivity I have about it.
Yeah. Sorry, Paul.
It's all right.
My sketch-up skills with plants isn't as crafty as yours.
Yeah. It's all right.
So just to give a project overview of the residential portion, this is starting at the north end. This is building one at the far north. The court, the buildings are all organized around internal courtyards, which face El Camino, which is the street frontage for the, for the project. So there's building one, two, three, and four. This is Holly Street here. And so these are the four residential buildings that are north of Holly Street. They're all a combination of three and four stories. One of the big changes that we've made, and I'll show you a little bit more detail later, is really reducing the mass of the fourth floor and the extent of the fourth floor on all of the residential buildings. And I'll show you a little bit more detail on that later in the presentation. So there's a lot of variation in height, and there's a lot of articulation in plan as well, as these courtyards step back and units face into these courtyards to create more private intimate areas for each building, its own community within the larger community. About the streetscape, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that here. And also, the courtyards are generally above El Camino Real in terms of grade relationship. It varies. It's about four feet, right? So you're not directly, you know, on El Camino, you're about four feet above and setback from it in the court. So you have some of them, you know, we've got swimming pools, and there's some other blue that you see or some fountain features. Otherwise, there are various use areas that residents can use for various purposes, and there's, and there is planting in them, which you don't always see in all the architectural elevations as well, because, again, for clarity, you're showing architecture. One of the things that this slide's about, I think we have another one as well, is the, you know, is getting a continuous row of street trees down this, down this site, a 10-foot-wide sidewalk that's continuous as well, running all the way down. And then I think at some point, I'm not sure if it's the next, it'll come along. I don't know if you want me to keep going. I can.
You did backwards.
I just want, yeah. No, I didn't. There we go.
Yeah, one more.
Yeah, well, we wanted to, in general, the street, the street pattern is as continuous as it can be based on existing utilities. Utilities tend to inform a lot of things at higher-density sites, so if there's a place where you're wondering, "Why isn't there a tree there?", it's usually because there's electric lines or water lines and things like that that are in place. And we're moving utilities in a lot of places to be able to get continuous planting. This is just a sort of a sample example, that the buildings are, you know, 17 to 30 feet from the curb, so if you want to go from the back of sidewalks, subtract 10 feet, so there's seven to 20 feet. Want to look at it that way. There's, you know, the continuous tree planting and lights in between every other, every other tree, so we need lighting along El Camino. And then there's terrace planters, and we have a landscape buffer between the building and El Camino in all cases. Depending, depending on where we are, the width is, width does vary as the street curves. And you can get a little bit of sense of some of the courtyards that would be up above. You can see the stairs that take you up. And that's kind of the general character of, of the street frontage along El Camino. Go back or...
Talk about the building entries being at grade there at the plaza.
Here?
To the left, in the center of the screen.
Oh, here.
In the very, the...
Go ahead. Go ahead. Just say it.
Sorry. Yeah, the other thing I wanted to point out is, as a pedestrian going along El Camino, you know, we're talking a lot about the varied experience that you'd have, the difference in setbacks, the difference in height, the different terraces of planning. But at each building entry, we have kind of a mini plaza, which is at grade. So as you're walking along, you're really invited into each building entry, and this would be, there's a fountain feature in this one, there's a couple of benches, I think, in others. So as you're walking along each, there's moments along the path that are open to the public, and they are at grade. Those aren't elevated. And so I just wanted to highlight on some of the design efforts that we've done since the original 2009 submittal. In talking with the east side neighborhood, it seemed like the fourth story was definitely one of the biggest hot points of contention. And so we've really worked hard to reduce the mass of the fourth story. So since the 2009, we redesigned the buildings, and this is buildings, all the residential buildings, one through six, have less fourth floor than they did in the initial design. And the total loss of fourth stories, about 34,000 square feet. So if you can picture three-quarters of an acre or three-quarters of a football field, that's how much building we've reduced from the fourth floor of the project. The other thing that we've really worked on is to increase the tree planting on the east side. We've worked a lot, and we are still talking with SAM Trans to figure out what's possible to plant on the berm. And because that's a little bit of an unknown at this point, we've done everything that we can to plant as much as we can on the project site itself. I'll just back up a couple of slides, so we can look at this. But on the east side of the project, this was within the project bounds, this entire row of trees that's been planted here that's shown has essentially been added. And because it's within the project boundary, that's something that the project can control, and so that's something that we can guarantee would be planted with the project. And so we've really worked with the fire department to reduce the fire truck turnarounds and just moved a lot of utilities and done whatever we can to increase the planting on the east side. Other public, other public improvements would be improved crosswalks along El Camino Real. This would be at Holly, San Carlos Avenue, at Cherry Street, and at Olive. And then the street tree planting that would be all along El Camino Real through the length of the project. So just to give an example of the reduction in the fourth floor mass, what you're going to see at the top of these slides is each building in the previous design, the shaded area, it's a little bit hard to see on this projector, but the shaded area shows the extent of the fourth floor in the previous design. And in the new design, in the current proposed design, the fourth floor area is just here. So we have three stories. East is up, actually, so the, this is a three-story roof below, and this is facing the east side neighbors. These roof forms here is also the third floor below, and that's facing El Camino Real. And so we've, it's about 9,500 square feet reduction, just in building one alone on the fourth floor. Buildings two and three, again, the top image here is the previous design. The new design is showing the extent of the fourth floor here. So the fourth floor area is just this portion here on building two. This area here is all roof form, which is the level three below. So this is facing the eastern neighborhood here. This three-story portion and this three-story portion here are facing El Camino. On building three, on both ends, both north and south, facing both El Camino and also the eastern neighborhoods, these units here have been removed, and so that's a three-story portion.
That's a 50-foot wall right across the street from our, right?
And so, sorry. And so on building four, this, this, this building is actually more across from the commercial. This is towards Holly Street, so there's the 7-Eleven that's across, across on the eastern side. So we've actually maintained more of the mass on building four than we have on some of the other buildings, but even on building four, we've reduced the height here and here. This is a three-story portion facing both El Camino and the east neighborhood, and again, facing Holly, similarly, we've brought the building down to three stories. Buildings five and six, these are also across from the commercial on the eastern neighborhood side, and this is also adjacent to the new retail plaza. So previously, we did have a three-story portion of the residential building here. This was the only portion of the building that was three stories in the initial design. But as you can see, we've really increased the area that's three stories here, and also facing Holly Street. This goes down to three stories as well. So again, in all of the residential buildings, we've reduced the area of the fourth floor in the new design. And that's the end of the architectural presentation.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the end of Legacy's presentation? Okay. Really quickly, I know we have some questions for, for the applicant, so...
Yeah, I've got lots of questions. Brian, you want to start? So I'm going to start with the statement that you made about SAM Trans wanting to move people closer to transit. And for me, it seems contradictory to put housing so close to the station, yet you're moving the parking for all the people who are actually trying to use the transit further away. And in fact, it's noticeable that the closest parking space for anybody who drives to actually take Caltrain is further away than any parking space on the, for the residents who live in the east side. So it seems to me that you've now actually made it more difficult for people to take transit by moving the parking so far away.
That's a great question or comment, a very, very thought-provoking one, and I thank you for asking it. The Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board, Caltrain, and Seamus Murphy is here for Caltrain, but SAM Trans is designing this parking structure or this parking yard, the transit center, on behalf of JPB as its local member entity, so I can, I can answer this one. The Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board has an access policy. And what the access policy basically says, and I'm going to get a little egghead-y here, and I apologize for doing this, but basically, in transit, you're looking for modes of access. How do we get people to the train? How, what's, what's the way you do that? And if you look at the design that we've got up there, and we don't need a picture to see it, I can describe this. Everybody wants to be in the same place, right? If I drive my car, I want to park right at that stairwell and walk right up those stairs. And if I take the shuttle, I want my shuttle to stop right at that stairwell, and I want to walk up those stairs. And if I walk to the station, I want to walk to the station, walk right up those stairs. Same thing for riding your car, same thing for riding a taxi, same thing for any mode of transit that you take. As that is the case, what we have to do as a transit agency is we have to set priorities as to what modes of transit we want to, of access that we want to prioritize. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't support all modes of transit, but it means when everybody wants to be at the same place, not everybody can be there. It's like my eight-year-old and six-year-old both want the same Barbie. They can't get the same Barbie. We got to figure out a way to prioritize. So our agency set priorities, the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board set priorities. And what those priorities basically say is, pedestrian takes precedent over cars. So when we have a situation, we have a long, skinny area, and we have to decide who gets that spot right at the stairwell, we go to our policy. Say, "What does our policy say?" Policy says pedestrian takes precedent over car. Policy says shuttle takes access over car. Policy says buses take access over car. That helps us make these decisions. If they could all be there, that would be, that would be great, but they can't. So we have to make these, these priorities, and that's the way it's teed up. And a lot of that has to do with greenhouse gases, a lot of that has to do with, with other things, but that's the priorities our board has set. Our staff looks to those priorities to guide us when we have to make these really tough decisions, because they are really tough decisions. They're not easy.
Thank you.
Express trains. You mentioned express trains. Express trains, when we started this process, four trains an hour stopped in San Carlos. Right now, one train an hour starts and stops in San Carlos. We've actually gone the opposite direction with Caltrain. We've actually made it more... We've actually made it more difficult for residents of San Carlos to take transit. It seems like what has happened is that we've actually disincentivized, shall we say, trying to take the train, because they don't stop here. And why would they stop an express train in San Carlos when it stops in Hillsdale and it stops in Redwood City? So the suggestion that if we build all of this, we're suddenly going to become a San Mateo, or a Redwood City, or a Milbrae, because now we're going to have all of these trains stopping, is, doesn't seem to be a real reality. And so all of these houses are going to be built right there, but they still won't have access to the transit.
Scott, what is your question for Brian in this case?
So the question is, what is going to happen to the transit system when this is built?
So we, I'm Seamus Murphy, Director of Government Affairs for Caltrain. And we have good news in terms of what the frequency of service will be to San Carlos and really all of our stations on the right-of-way. We have a Caltrain modernization program, which has been in the works for a long time. It includes electrification of the right-of-way and installation of a new safety system. And the benefit of both of those projects combined is that they allow us to purchase lighter-weight, European-style equipment that has performance advantages over our existing diesel equipment, especially in terms of the frequency that would be allowed at all of our stations. And so if you think in terms of how the system operates today, we have express trains that stop five, maybe six times as they make their trip between San Francisco and San Jose, that takes about an hour. When we have an electrified system and this new rolling stock, we'll be able to make that same trip in the same runtime, but we'll be able to stop 14, maybe 16 times as we make that trip. That allows us to increase frequency at every station. So when you get on a train in San Francisco, and today you might only have one or two options every hour, if you want to get to your job or your destination in San Carlos, with an electrified system, you'll have five, maybe six options every hour that will make that trip, and it'll do it in the same time that an express train makes the trip today.
And is that truly what's going to happen? Or is what's going to happen is now you keep the same stops, and you're going to go from San Jose to San Francisco quicker?
We'll have flexibility in terms of what scheduling options we can pursue. We don't have a schedule that has been defined yet. The schedule that ultimately is operated is going to be one that's based on ridership demand and maximizes capacity and ridership for us to reflect the demand that we have, which is growing. And if there is demand for transit service in San Carlos because uses change around the station, uses change around downtown, then we're going to be able to adapt transit service and provide a schedule that reflects that growing demand.
Thank you. Brian? I got a bunch of questions here.
That's okay.
These are all based on your comments. You talked about a pedestrian-only area on the plaza. What about bikes?
So typically in our Caltrain stations, we don't allow bikes to be ridden through the Caltrain station areas. So my assumption's going to be, we're going to do the same thing here on the plaza. We're going to ask people to walk their bikes when they get into that plaza area to keep it safe. Of course, people will still be there to do whatever they can do in the streets of San Carlos, the new sidewalks that are built on either side of the transit center. But in that plaza area and underneath the tracks, you know, I think we would probably be likely enforcing a walk-your-bike situation to create safety for people.
And who's going to be enforcing that?
That would be the agency transit police.
Let's see. You talk about valet parking in the kiss-and-ride on the west side. That assumes that people aren't still going to be using the kiss-and-ride after 6:00 in the evening. So how are you going to manage valet parking and people who are stopping there to pick individuals up and drop people off?
Sure. Well, I hope that, you know, one of the things that I think is really important, you try to do when you try to put all these uses on top of each other, not only do we need to prioritize, but we need to maximize the use of any one particular area. So having the capacity to do kiss-and-ride and valet at the same time is important. We're hoping that to a large degree, and I agree with you, not to the total degree, but to a large degree, the kiss-and-ride function and any evening function that may be in that building. And of course, we can't suppose today that it would be a restaurant or something. If it were, it would have that functionality. We would assume that those two peaks would be different, so that the highest use in the morning would be for dropping off, and in the evening after 6:00 or 7:00, you would have the ability to do a valet. If it turns out that there is a competing need for that, what we'll do is we'll write something into our agreement with whatever other entity besides a transit agency wants to use that area, we'll write something in there to allow that area to be shared and not be overburdened.
Before I move on to Sheri and Paul, I noticed a couple of things in your transit parking lot. The closest Caltrain handicap parking spot is at least 500 feet away from the loading platform. That's if they can make it up the stairs. I have a little bit of a trouble, I have a lot of trouble with that, actually, because anybody who would require a wheelchair would essentially be excluded from using Caltrain at this station. You could not, it would be a tremendous burden for them to get from those parking lots, which would actually be south of Cherry, to get all the way to the ramp, which would allow them to get up to the station. So that's something that, when you talk about priorities, I look at that and think somehow the handicaps, handicapped individuals have gotten a much lower priority than somebody who's capable of walking to a business. So that's something that I think we're going to have to address.
Is that something Brian can speak to?
Yes.
I would simply say in that case that, you know, by law, we'll be required to be ADA compliant. And I do know that as we're looking at that north end of the transit center, if you will, again, that's the area where we're competing with a lot of things, we've had some comments internally that we want to relook and prioritize in that area. I'll be sure to carry forward to our people. Again, we'll be ADA compliant no matter what we do, but I'll be sure to carry these comments forward as well, that we, you know, make sure that we keep an eye out for our disabled patrons and potentially try to prioritize some things closer in that area. But again, we will be ADA compliant by law, no matter what we do.
So one other thing before you, this is a 100-year project. You call it 99 years, I call it 100 years. And one of the things that I look at is the track record. And I know you and I have had an awful lot of discussions over the last 12 years. Honestly, if the last 12 years of a track record for Sam Trans and Caltrain is any indication of what it's going to be like for the next 100 years, we have a serious problem.
Now, now. Don't make me gavel this.
I think that I have a real problem with this project, and I have a real problem with the fact that there are a lot of things in here that are not really guaranteed. And so we're going to continue to have a lot more of these discussions.
Well, again, our goal as a public agency is to partner with the communities in which we sit and address the specific tensions that occur, because there's a transit system there. And we try to be as receptive as we possibly can and to address those issues to the best degree that we can, and we will continue to do so as this relationship continues.
I will tell you personally, from my personal experience in the last 12 years, both agencies have failed miserably.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want Sheri to come up?
Yes.
Sheri?
Sheri, like the architecture. Really like the way the buildings look, okay?
Thanks.
I do have a couple of questions. You talked about the way the building seven and eight actually stepped down to the depot. I agree with you on building seven. I like building seven. I think it's the right height that steps down. Building eight doesn't really step down for me, okay? The height that that building, and I noticed your pictures, they all show pictures of building seven. They never show the plaza.
Well, this is actually, this is building eight, if we want to take a look at this. So we've got the three-story here, down to two stories, and then down to the one-story terrace beyond.
So Scott, is your question that it...
But it's one story for the depot, and you've got 50 feet. Actually, it's 46, 47 feet tall. That, to me, is not really stepping down.
Yeah, well, I would like to point out that the portion of the building that is closest to the depot is one, and then we step up to two. And then I do have some, if you want to see the animations, I think we showed them in the study section prior.
You did show, and I still didn't feel like it really stepped down for building eight. So that's going to be an issue that I think we're going to have to discuss. The plaza. So when I look at the plaza, and I'm worried about the area that you, you talk about outdoor dining versus people passing through. And I just, I'm concerned about that area spilling out into the plaza and making it difficult for people to actually walk through the plaza, because we know people are going to be walking through that plaza in order to get up to the train station. Everyone who lives on the east side walks through that plaza in order to get to downtown. And if it's any, if it's like the downtown right now, it's very difficult to walk on the sidewalks in downtown. The tables and chairs and businesses have spilled over in such a way that they're actually impeding the pedestrians. And we don't really do a whole lot about that right now, and I want to make sure that that doesn't happen here, because there will be, hopefully, a lot more traffic here. So I don't know what your plan is. I saw the square stone things, but I'm not sure that that's going to be enough in that plaza.
Actually, I think design-wise, we have a couple of things going for us there, and we'll just have Paul articulate. But starting with the building here, again, this is the one-story portion that's closest to the depot that I was pointing out here. And what this has done is create a little pocket.
Just to clarify, that little tiny square in the upper-left-hand corner is the one story?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is the one-story portion here. And so what this has done is create a little notch for that outdoor dining. Again, I think if you were a diner, you wouldn't want to be in the middle of the plaza either. It wouldn't be a comfortable dining situation. So we're looking for a situation that's good for both the commuters and people passing through from the east side to the west side, and also for the diners. And so you can see that this is about 16 feet of unencumbered, I think it actually might be a little bit more than that, about 16 feet. And so that's wider than the total width of the sidewalks downtown currently. I think those sidewalks vary between 8 and 10 feet. And so this is 16, completely unencumbered here.
And I think what Scott's asking is if there's anything that delineates the spillover that prevents the spillover from the restaurant side.
Sure, sure, absolutely. And I think that comes down to good building management.
And the other thing that I noticed from your last presentation before is that seemed to be the area that you were putting the farmer's market in, okay?
Yeah, and we took that out. We're not going to direct any activities in those spaces that you don't want to have there, for sure. That was just, you know, one of 100 different things, and it's gone.
The other thing that I had a concern with are those stone sort of seating locations. There's really nothing there to prevent cars from driving into the plaza, except those sort of couple of foot-high stone squares. But they're actually, it looked to me like they're...
Well, there is a curb, there's a street curb.
There is a street curb there.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, so the street curb would be in line with this line here. So there would be about a 10-foot sidewalk, and then the first set of plinths. So you'd have to jump the curb and then also go over the plinths. So there's a couple of layers there. But the first line of defense is definitely the street curb itself.
Let's see. The courtyards. Are any of the courtyards accessible to the public? I noticed you talked about sort of the little area to the front, but I believe that there's a requirement that 10% of the area be accessible to the public.
Correct, and that's true. The areas that are accessible to the public are the ones at grade in front of the courtyards. So essentially, this is the line of the elevated courtyard back here.
Okay.
And so the stuff at grade is what's accessible to the public. But the courtyard itself, because the residents need amenities that are for themselves as well, it's a balance. Some of it's public, some of it is private. But when you get to the four-foot elevation courtyard, that is typically for the residents. It's common area for the residents, but...
We need to have a clarification in the zoning, whether that 10% is 10% of the property or if it's 10% of the courtyard area.
Do we want to clarify that now? Because I believe it's 10% of the property.
I'm sure we'll, so it's 10% of the courtyard area?
Of the property, I believe.
Of the property, okay.
We can have staff maybe clarify that.
They can get back to you with that.
Yes.
Great.
We did go through those calculations.
The other question I would like to ask is, you've lined up the streets with the streets on the neighborhood. If the berm is removed someday and is replaced with an aerial viaduct, is there the ability to allow traffic to flow through the project?
You mean, street traffic?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be something to consider in a design. I don't think we've done anything that would preclude that, mainly because we have this access easement, emergency access easement, that's shared between the project boundary and the Caltrain right-of-way. And so that's available for fire truck access, maintenance vehicles for the tracks, et cetera. So, for example, if there was nothing here to obstruct, because we do have a driveway here, it could conceivably connect. I mean, that would be, we'd have to be studied, but...
The reason I ask that is that was one of the discussions that we had many, many years ago, was whether we were even considering opening an area underneath the berm in order to have traffic flow through some of these residential streets into El Camino. So I'm just kind of curious whether that is...
Yeah, there's no building in the way here. There is the berm and the tracks, but if, in terms of the project, the architecture of the project, that would not preclude something in the future should the berm go away?
Another question that I have is, you mentioned that 34,000 square feet of the property, and essentially, three-quarters of a football field have actually been removed from the project.
From the fourth floor.
From the fourth floor, okay?
Correct.
One of, and I believe this was a conversation I had with one of the residents on the east side, who actually figured out all the square area of the project and came up with the number of, of it only being 7% of the project has actually been removed by scaling back that, what you've done on the fourth floor.
I'm not sure where the 7% number came from.
Well, I think it came from taking all of the square footage of the project and saying, how much of a decrease in the project did you actually do as far as removing... how much of a decrease in the project did you actually do as far as removing those few units that you removed? Well, actually, you didn't remove any units.
But the units got smaller.
But the units got smaller. And I was just curious if that number sounds correct to you.
It sounds low to me. The 7% sounds low to me. One way that we're able to achieve the project goals and also accommodate reducing the fourth-floor mass is by making the units smaller, and also filling in some spaces on the ground floor, on the lower floors that, where we could, in order to keep the project viable. Keeping the unit count at 280 was one of the goals. And so, there is, there are more units on the ground floor than there were previously in order to keep the unit count high.
That's all the questions I have for the moment.
Great, thank you, Scott. David, do you have any questions?
For the architect or for Caltrans?
For the architect or Sam Trans, or for staff?
I mean, I had some questions about parking, but you know what? I'm going to be here at all the meetings, and these folks might not want to come back to all the meetings, so I'm happy to delay my questions till the end.
The seizure time?
Yeah, if that's okay with everyone.
Sign with me. Shannon, do you have any questions for the architect or for staff at this point?
Yeah, I did have questions on landscaping. On the, basically, the trees that are being put in, are the root bases go down or out? I'm concerned about the trees, actually, the roots coming up and affecting the sidewalks after five, six years. Has that been considered?
Yes. One of the things that, we haven't gotten to that level yet, we're really wanting to get to that level, but there's a lot of different ways we can plant the street trees, with structural soil, silber cells, and things like that, that can expand the area that roots can grow in, so it won't cause that problem as soon. I mean, in 100 years, you know, trees and sidewalks are always going to be an issue, but there's a lot of things we can do to reduce that, so it's not a five-year issue or a 10-year issue even. So, yes, absolutely. And that's not just the street trees. We have other, you know, close planting environments, we would do that as well.
Great. Jesse, do you have any questions for staff or for the architect applicant at this time? All of my questions are actually for later, so, thank you very much. Okay, well, at this point, what I'd like to do is take a...
There seems to be...
I just had a quick response to Commissioner Marston. The code provides that the public open, the public space is 10% of the total site.
Okay, great. What I'd like to do is to take a quick five-minute break at this point, and then we're going to come back and open its public comment.
Was there agreement as far as when we end these meetings?
10:30.
10:30.
10:30. All right.
Get used to it.
Okay, seeing that all the commissioners are back, we're just gonna wait for a couple more staff members to get back and then we'll get started.
That'll be the...
I like that one.
Maybe we all pick a different coat?
Yeah.
Now, seeing everybody back, I'd like to go ahead and restart the meeting. And, thank you. We are gonna go ahead and now take comments from the public, and I just have a couple of quick things to say before we do. Many of you were here during the study session, of course, most of you guys were here as well, and you may remember that I had purposely declined to put a time limit on public comment from the study session because the purpose was specifically to solicit feedback from the public about the project. Moving forward, we will have a three-minute time limit, and it will be enforced by my bouncers next to me on either side, so please do your best to stay to the time limit. And additionally, I do ask that you direct your comments and questions to us, and the commission will then give some time for staff to respond to those comments and questions after public comment. Of course, as always, please refrain from shouting and cheering from the audience, please refrain from disrespectful language, and new information in your comments that were not spoken by a previous speaker are much appreciated by the dais. Okay? Great, we're gonna go ahead and start with our first speaker, Alex Phillips. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Alex Phillips, live at 798 Walnut Street. I was on the Planning Commission for nine years and was chairman for three years, and I've been in San Carlos for 20 years, so I still consider myself a relative newcomer. But I've learned a lot about this city, and I spent a lot of time studying it while I was on the Planning Commission and on other committees leading up to serving on the Planning Commission. I want to point out, a decision was made a long time ago in San Carlos, in 1958, on Walnut, Elm, and Chestnut, it was all single-family homes, and a zoning change was made to make that multifamily, which greatly increased the value of the property. But there was no eminent novane, nobody was forced out. It took 20 years before property started being consolidated, and we ended up, 20 years after that, with the apartments that we have now on those three streets. And it's primarily because of that vision and that long-range thinking that Caltrans doesn't depend on cars to get people to the station. There are many more people walking to the station than looking for a parking space at the station, and I think we should have more of that. When we started this planning process, Scott, Brian, we were all there in the initial sessions. The realization was, is that we live in a beautiful place. We have a higher percentage of permanently preserved open space in an urban county than anywhere else in the United States. And part of the price that we have to pay for that is having higher density in places where it makes sense, like right next to the train station. No one will be forced to live there. It's a choice. I know a lot of young people that haven't started families yet that would love to live in a place like that. They'd go down to Barone's and go up to San Francisco, they would love that. And the tragedy, when we started this planning process, was that San Carlos is probably the best place in the world to grow up or to raise kids, but once they leave the home, there's no place for them to live in San Carlos. And I was struck with this recently. I've lived in a nice house up in the hills for 20 years. I decided to look for a smaller place to live, someplace I could rent, wouldn't have to take care of the yard, none of that stuff. It took me three months of going from apartment to apartment, there was only one or two apartments a week that would pop up, and there would be 16 or 20 people applying to live there in those apartments. The vacancy rate is so drastically low in San Carlos, it's just not a possibility for our kids to stay close by. They have to go move to a city somewhere, move across the country. That's a tragedy, and I think this project would help alleviate some of that. And I think that we can't let a few people, I dearly love the people who live in East San Carlos, they're great people, but you can't have them dictating what's best for the entire city and the future of this city.
Alex, are you close to wrapping it?
Yes, I am. Well, I'm very disappointed that the size of the project has been reduced, it was originally 320 units, and that now in 2011, we've added this housing fee that is probably gonna eliminate development forever. This may be the last project that ever has a chance of penciling out because that Sam Trans and Legacy Partners have bent over backwards to satisfy their requirements. I don't think this is good leadership if we shut this project down. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Dmitri.
So, I'm gonna respectfully ask for some indulgence, perhaps more than three minutes, as I am a community representative, and it does state on the cards.
It does say on the card that organized presentations are limited, do have more time.
But I will be as quick as I can.
Thank you.
So, it's overwhelming to look at 300 pages when it's presented to the community on, say, Thursday and try to have a cogent, coherent response. It's also concerning to me with our new member to not have that history. I don't know if you've been, received all of the documentation that's been, you know, provided over the years, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read all of it, but it's very important. SEQA, so let me do the best I can. SEQA has two reasons, one is for an environmental review, and the second is for public notification. The Transit Village EIR did not include the multimodal station in the final EIR report. This was piecemealed by staff, Sam Trans, and Legacy to deny NEPA considerations and possibly for federal grant funding reasons. The environmental review from the project needs to reflect cumulative impacts and mitigations of all of these projects, and this is the first time, I believe, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, because I've been to so many meetings, I don't recall you guys ever looking at the parking. Was, has that been part of previous meetings? I'm just not sure, like, the actual lot?
Yes.
And design, the pick-up and drop-off. So, you know, when we look at this, we have to look at the project as a whole. I agree with a couple of things that the previous speaker mentioned, that, yeah, we need to look for the overall, you know, what's best for the overall community, but I disagree on so many points, it's not worth mentioning when we start getting into the specifics. So, there was a, I'm very confused because we're seeing three projects here that were, there's the legacy portion of it, there's the multimodal station, and then there's the part south. And I don't think that there's ever been a discussion holistically of all three. So again, maybe you guys can help me understand that, you know, it seems that we're, we did not have an EIR review of the multimodal station. Is that a separate document? Is that something that Sam Trans is preparing? I'm asking the question.
Dmitri, I'll be sure to ask that of staff when you're finished.
Yeah, because basically, from our perspective, this is, by piecemealing these things, it makes it easier to present a limited scope, so when you're considering it, you're only looking at specific items, but then you're not looking at the whole of the project. So, I'm very concerned about that. You know, over this time, the credibility and trust between city staff and the public, you know, the credibility has been strained significantly, and it's not staff's purview to pick and choose which issues and whose issues they're willing to represent. They do need to represent the entire city and all of the neighborhoods. The city has a responsibility as a lead agency to do that proper review and have that public notification of the scope, so I'm really concerned that this was the first time we ever saw east side connect and how it relates to the transit village. I'm very concerned that we have a narrowing of traffic lanes and no discussion about how that affects the shuttles. And now there's a separate traffic study on it, and there was no environmental review and no public notification of that traffic study except for a couple of days ago. It feels to me that staff are making a conscious choice not to share those negative impacts and discuss them, you know, with the community, you know, especially regarding the shuttle stuff. I'm really concerned about it, and by having, only looking at the street bits, not looking at the project as a whole, we get a biased picture. So, let's, let me keep going here. My concern is that, as a planning commission, that you look at staff's recommendation to approve this project and look at it with a very critical eye. You know, as we mentioned before, EIR guidance was very different to this body than it was to the city council. You were seemingly, I mean, they're touting that it was a unanimous decision, but I felt that there was quite a bit of hesitation on the part of the planning commission when you did approve the EIR. There, in the public records document request, we don't see clear title for the land south of Arroyo, so it's not clear who actually owns that. Trees and screening, here's something, at the last meeting I mentioned, there really should be part of project approval. It should be, you know, project approval should be, you know, conditional on understanding what actually is possible on the berm. I've taken a quick scan of documents that one of the board members have looked at, and they're basically saying that trees and electrified lines, overhead lines are a poor mix, the engineers for Caltrain. So I'm concerned that we're not gonna get any trees, and I'm actually concerned that whatever trees we may have may be eliminated, or at least some of them may be eliminated. So, that would be a false promise.
Dmitri, you're coming up on five minutes, if you could, do you think you can wrap it up in a minute?
I'm getting there. I strongly suggest that you don't approve the zoning, zoning change, I'm actually surprised that the zoning was not changed earlier. The stakeholder mediation process was not adequately represented, I think we've talked enough about that. The reduction in ground floor of commercial space was not a public request, that was something, you know, there's been no changes to building aid. I've talked about that quite a bit. There's no landscaping south of Holly Street. We've heard the representatives talk about the magic trees that will block the sound at one of the previous meetings. I don't understand how that happens. Mr. Fitzpatrick has talked about, you know, how their track record, or that was being discussed earlier, it took, one resident spent over a month of their time working with Sam Trans on complaints, there was no action taken within an hour of a news report on KPIX, KPIX, whatever it is, Channel 5 News, within an hour, the problem was resolved. It feels like we have to go public in as public of a manner to get any action out of the agency. So, I'm gonna wrap it up here. Mr. Fitzpatrick noted nightlife opportunities, very concerned that we're gonna be revisiting the additional pressures on our community to have sponsored valet parking for nightclubs right by residential homes. And there was a quote he said, "You better make sure we did the right thing." And how do you build the right project when you consistently ignore community concerns? How do you build a better project when the applicant threatens to sue the city to eliminate the affordable housing element? How do you build the right project when you plan a nightlife element that was never discussed during the EIR phase? How do you plan the right project when you piecemeal the projects for the EIR and link them back when you feel it suits your purpose or narrative? How do you plan the right project when you misrepresent the distances from the parking lot to the station platform in public meetings that city council requested? I had to sit there and correct Mr. Fitzpatrick so he wouldn't misrepresent that at a public meeting. How do you build the right project when the applicant, I mentioned, threatens to sue the city to get out of affordable housing? I mean, I understand, I want affordable housing. I would like the entire project to be affordable housing if we could make it. So, you know.
Sorry, Dmitri, I was gonna ask you to wrap it up.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop here. If we wanna be like the other communities, Bay Shore's got 18,000 housing units that Sam Trans and their partners are putting in, San Bruno, 1,600 units, Matero Rail Corridor, we're talking at least 1,000 units if not more. Station Park Arena, 600 residential units. There's a lot of building going on, and what we wanna do is make sure that we do the, a project that is scaled properly for this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Robert Chaffron, did I say that right?
Stafford.
Stafford, sorry, I know that.
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm here tonight in support of the Transit Village, and I urge you to approve the SEQA findings and the mitigation measures therein. The plan development is really consistent with the general plan. And, you know, it's interesting, one commission member said essentially that a requirement can't be a benefit. A requirement is a benefit. Ask Public Works, ask anyone that's involved with building infrastructure. It's a false statement to say that, and I think you really have to look intrinsically at the infrastructure to say there is an inherent benefit. I think one of the benefits that's coming out tonight that's crystal clear is really the collegiality among all the participants. The east side, I think, has done a great job to energize their community and bring up relevant points and to shape the project in a way that is sensitive, and I think they ought to be applauded for doing that. Staff has done a very good job in marshaling these competing interests with the development. If you step back, with no pun intended, you really have to say this is a legacy project. Intergenerational, no question. 50 years from now, they'll say, "Why did they build three and four stories?" From an environmental point of view, it's consistent with the Climate Action Plan, it's a TOD personified. Car-centric living is part of the opposition, they're thinking that everyone's gonna keep living the way we live now. I was down at Google the other day with one of my cousins that's 28, and really, the in-demographic move is away from cars. I have three cars, I need each one. They have none, they're happy. So we start to look at the paradigm shift, and we become uncomfortable with our own lifestyles, thinking this must be the way it's gonna be. It's not. Find me another plaza in San Carlos that gives deference to a historical building, doesn't exist. We whisk by Frederick's Building. The deference to that building personifies the sensitivity, I think, of the development plan. Walk there now, you feel like a pinata at a really bad children's birthday party, it's not good. The tax base is significant, the public works is significant, but again, what I think is most significant is the collegiality in a very uncomfortable way that this is brought out to demonstrate that adverse positions can work together, and they may be seen red, but we're all in the same room tonight for the same purpose. It's a great project, and I think we're getting closer. Thanks.
Thank you, Robert. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, he did say Robert.
I'm Robert Stafford, our office is at 1580. My daughter, Carly, who's the fourth generation in San Carlos, goes to school in third grade, I've been active in a number of ways in San Carlos. Thanks.
Thank you. David Crabbe.
Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission, I'm David Crabbe, I live here in San Carlos. I'm gonna be speaking tonight in behalf of the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee. To date, the Sierra Club has taken a fairly nuanced approach to this project. We like the ideas of a project, the idea of a project of this size and scope in this location, but we have consistently said that the proposed project lacks certain elements that we feel are essential if this is truly to be a transit-oriented development as opposed to a transit-adjacent development. On September 12th, we sent you a letter outlining our concerns, I hope that you all received it and had a chance to read it. One of our major concerns, which just came to the fore just a couple of weeks ago, is because of the activity of Legacy, is that we want the project to continue to include a minimum of 15% affordable housing units per the city's existing BMR ordinance. The recent request by the developer for a waiver from the city's affordable housing requirement was just last week rejected by the city council, but we really have reason to believe that Legacy intends to continue its efforts to water down the BMR requirements as the approval process proceeds. This, thus, we asked the Planning Commission tonight to make it clear to Legacy that this project will not be approved and any form of the BMR requirement is reduced. Now, second, we outlined a set of Transportation Demand Management Programs, TDM, which we'd like to see Legacy include in the project to reduce traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions in and around the site. Among these are unbundled parking, shared parking, incentives for transit use, car and bike share stations, bicycle improvements, and others. I think they've been thinking about some of them, haven't committed at this point. Some of these have been discussed earlier in meetings of the Planning Commission, but to our knowledge, neither Legacy nor the city has formally committed to implementing a single one of them. We've talked about transit demand, but we still haven't got an agreement on it. Another request that we included under the TDM, but which actually probably deserves a stand on its own, is new pedestrian sidewalks and crossings to meet the requirements of complete streets and the Safe Routes to School program. One of our great disappointments concerning this project is that there seems to be no real cooperation between the multiple entities involved in its design. For example, pedestrian convenience and bicycle access on-site is the responsibility of Legacy, but Legacy has no control over what happens beyond the property line. This falls to Sam Trans, Caltrain, Caltrans, and the city, who have power to shape the streets, crossings, landscaping, and sidewalks adjacent to the project. What is needed is a grand plan for the entire area, a station-area plan. Such a plan should require Legacy to submit very detailed designs for the sidewalks and bike-access routes on the Legacy site, including a clear bike route from all the apartments to the train station, especially including apartments north of Holly Street. This was part of the improvement measures, and it has not happened, to my knowledge, that they have any access.
But would you be able to wrap it up in a minute?
Okay, the big point here is that there's a whole bunch of different agencies involved in this project, not just the triangle, there's actually about five agencies involved, and for, you know, we're talking about all these crossings on El Camino, we really want them to work for pedestrian access, and every time we go to Legacy and ask them, "What are you doing?", they say, "Well, that's, you know, Caltrans determines that." If you go to the city, the city says, "Caltrans determines that." Everyone's passing the buck. And it's time for the city to step up and to do some work. They need to look at the, improving the last block of San Carlos Avenue, as was been recommended by the transportation group, so that they maybe make that into a more pedestrian-friendly area and redirect traffic north and south to Holly and to Cherry Street. And so, I just feel that the city really needs to step up and take more responsibility for this, and also Legacy needs to work a little closer with Caltrain, Caltrans, and then Caltrain and Sam Trans, everybody else has all worked together and make this whole thing work. So, I sure like to see a plan which brings all the bits and pieces together. Parts of them are already there, we've got the east side connect, we've got the recommendation for what happens in South Carlos Avenue, but it's not there, and there's no commitment to it, there isn't east side, but there's no commitment for the San Carlos section to be done, or any other of these, no real serious commitment to a specific plan for the crossings at Holly, San Carlos Avenue, and Cherry. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Clarification of the speaker?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand, because I found the submissions from Sierra Club to be very useful, and so I wanna make sure they're still useful. When you're talking about the TDM management plan, in looking at the board memo, I assume you've looked at the memo? It talks about the TDM plan being required by the ordinance and lays out, it lays out Legacy's proposal for complying with the TDM plan.
I have not read that, I apologize.
Oh, okay. It would be very helpful to me, I mean, if Sierra Club believes that there are still problems with, for example, compliance with the TDM plan, there's also a discussion of the required bike parking plans in here. If, after Sierra Club looks at the board memo, if it believes those problems still exist, I would love to see that in a letter form, I mean, if the Sierra Club's inclined.
We'd be glad to do that. I apologize that we had.
No, it's okay, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I was just trying to understand.
What board memo is this?
This is the memo for today's meeting, and the TDM plan is on pages 22 and 23, and the bike, the bike parking is near that as well. It's a long plan.
That's the old story, they give it to you three days before.
And I'm not criticizing you, I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're saying.
We'll certainly look at that, and we'll bring it back the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, David. Next, I have Ben Fuller. And then after Ben, I have Tim, just so you guys can queue up.
Hello, Planning Commission, welcome to the new planning commissioner. I'm gonna start with a general thing, which is, I know there's been a lot of work done by all different parties, and we're all trying to get something, it's getting better, we're still not there. One of the issues that I've brought up again and again is that we have a significant impact. We know that you guys all voted for this EIR and said there's no significant impact. I think all of you would probably agree that you don't even agree with that, but you were told you had to, and so you did. Because there's such impact, we want benefit for the neighborhood, we think that's really important. We shouldn't get all the impact and no benefit, so we've talked specifically about the things we want. We want the park expanded, we want the shuttles moved, we want other things to mitigate some of the impacts that are going to exist, extrinsic benefit, we call it. Now, I wanna talk a little about some of the other issues that I've seen. I was going to CVS the other day, I walked over the berm, and I literally walked over it, because I wanted to see what it was like, right over the train tracks, and I dropped down and I went behind, literally on the west side of the berm, I walked all the way to CVS behind a whole bunch of concrete buildings, and what I found were homeless encampments, literally, people living in homeless encampments right along the berm behind CVS. And I thought to myself, wow, this would be a perfect place for a bike path, it's gonna be emergency access area anyway, it'd be really, I've heard about this bike lane thing, so I just wanted you guys to consider requiring a bike path that fixes that entire area and not just the Legacy portion. Pedestrian was brought up again as well. Pedestrian was brought up again as well. One of the things that Angela had mentioned before is that there was no safety area if you're crossing Holly Street towards the station from the north side. There's no island between that eight-lane area. I think you should really try to get that in there. It's still so dangerous to cross at grade, and so I'm not just thinking about the East Side. I'm trying to think about, how can we make this thing better and safe? Bike lanes, better pedestrian opportunities. One of the things that Scott brought up today, and I got to agree with, I'm going to mention a little bit about SAM Trans, is we got to improve the relationship somehow. You know, we've been doing all these public records requests, and I'm sure you guys have heard about the possibility of a referendum around the project and that I could be leading if we can't come to a conclusion here. And I will mention that developments are really unpopular in citywide referendums, if you look around the country. If we do it, we're probably going to win. But we don't want to do it, but we may not have a choice. And Mark Simon, in one of the emails we uncovered, said, "Ben's considering a referendum because he's losing." I look at that as like locker room talk. I mean, when people start saying that kind of stuff, I'm going to work all the harder. And then I just heard a 30-minute presentation by Brian Fitzpatrick where no one told him to speed up, and he was able to basically pitch how great everything was in his own sort of self-congratulatory history of what had happened over the last 10 years. Well, first of all, Mr. Fitzpatrick, what about the eminent domaining of all those businesses so you guys could acquire that property to run your shoe fly, admittedly? And then the creation of what Mike Garvey, the old city manager, called a compact berm, that instead of costing $4 million to build that berm, it costs $27 million to build it instead of 30 feet tall, 15 feet tall, housing all the fiber optics in a compact berm to do what? To preserve our view. The same thing you guys said was not a significant impact. Well, it was back then. And this is just how the goal line is always changing. They build one thing, they build the next thing. So, you know, I took real offense with that sort of congratulatory history of the berm. I want to go, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Planning Commission and what your job is. Trees on berm. So Dimitri brought that up. If electrification comes in, there probably will never be trees on the berm.
Ben, because you're representing the whole East Side, I'm going to give you a couple more minutes, but if you could, wrap it up in two minutes.
So, parking, of course, we get the full impact. So I talked to a couple of our city council members, and even the ones who are voting for this project and who are supporting it admit that there's very little in it for us. Karen Clapper, the one thing she mentioned is that it's going to improve our real estate values, that 55-foot buildings across the street from 12-foot buildings. That's our benefit, better real estate values. Bob Grecilli, you should get more. You are getting ripped off. These are guys who are voting for the project, okay? We're just not getting a good deal. Then we got this whole Keystone Cops thing, where the city is telling you guys, "Well, you have to vote for the EIR even if you don't agree with it." And you guys are voting for the EIR, and then telling me, "Oh, well, we had to." Okay, so that gets back to the Planning Commission. What is the Planning Commission? What is your job? Do you have any real power? Is your only power to vote for this thing? Or can you actually do anything to change the size of the buildings and to require things? I mean, you guys are the most toothless guys out, you know, and I don't really understand. It seems like you're being constrained by Greg. Greg, he never lets you do anything. I don't understand. So seriously, what is your role? And that's a question for you. Can any of you answer? Other than vote yes, what can you guys do?
Ben, I will actually answer your questions, and Dimitri's at the end of public comment.
Okay, I'd love an answer for that. So, all right, I think I'm going to wrap up by mentioning just that the project is actually not as far away from being where it needs to be as it could have been. Now, the thing that really bothered me the most, and Jeff, you may take exception to this, is we had negotiations, mediations, that are being marketed as these great things that occurred. And you told me face-to-face that that building, Building Number Three, was going to be three-story stepping back to four. And you heard my public outbursts, and I don't apologize for it. Jeff, you put a 55-foot wall across the street from my house on Building Three. What happened on Building Three? How did that ever happen? When you told me, man-to-man, that that wasn't going to be the case.
Sorry, Ben, please direct it to us. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, how did that happen?
Very definitely.
So, if we want to start trusting each other, we got to start telling the truth, and that kind of thing can't happen. Building Three, Building Two, those things ought to be three stories. I know there's, there is a need to get a lot of stuff in there, you know, but reduce this thing a little bit more and give us something. Give us the park, Al. Give us some of these things we need to make this better, and then we can live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Tim? And then after Tim, I have Chris.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tim Hill, 1052 Sylvan Drive. As Dimitri mentioned, we just got this information on Thursday, 35, 35 pages. I would just like to address page 25 of the Planning Commission condition of approval for the project development zoning. First of all, I'd like to read from paragraph F, the last sentence. In making the determination for the zoning, the following factors shall be considered. There's nine factors here. I'd like to go through them. Appropriateness of the uses of the proposed location. I think we could all agree that it's been debatable whether or not this location is appropriate for such a large structure so close to neighborhoods. It really does not fit in with the general plan, and we've outlined that with several land use policy numbers, which I won't go into, but I am on record with those. Number two, the mixed use, the mixed uses of housing types and housing price levels. As far as I can see, looking into the financial impact analysis, this is all luxury housing. And there is going to be no affordable housing right now. Legacy is applying for a waiver of that. And so for number two, that's out. That doesn't fit with what's required here. Number three, provision of units affordable to persons and families of low and moderate income to lower-income households. It's currently out. So, two out of three. Provision of infrastructure improvements. If you look at the FIA, which is basically the only document that has any kind of discussion about any kind of infrastructure or public, you know, the police and fire, things like that, there's really no discussion of infrastructure in the FIA. And there's no discussion really of it besides traffic mitigation in the final EIR. There's no discussions about the impacts on sewers, impacts on garbage, the increases that we're going to be facing because of this. So there's really no provisions at all. So number four, I think, is out as well. Provision of open space. Look up there and look at all those buildings. Go south of Holly Street. What do we have? We have a plaza that's, I don't know, a half an acre, a third of an acre? That's all the open space we have besides, what, 10% open to the public? That's not a very good provision of open space, so that's out. Compatibility of uses within the development area. Well, I guess we're going to have some office space, maybe a Starbucks or a nightclub. There's really not a lot of variation here. So that's out. Creativity in design and use of land. Well, I guess the creativity is to build 280 units so the city could meet its housing needs. That's not very creative to me and to probably most of the community. That's out. Number eight, quality of design and adequacy of light and air to the interior spaces of the buildings. Well, I have to disagree with Mr. Marsters. I think these buildings are downright ugly. I think they look like 1001 Laurel Street, and I do not want to see those. They are not in the character of this town. I would charge the Planning Commission, the city, to take a poll, spend some money, make some calls to people. We had two people get up and speak in favor of this, three people, actually. That's the most I've seen at a meeting so far. But call, call around. Call the west side, call the east side. I think it's worth spending some money before we rezone this and really see what the public wants. Because these meetings and the public outreach have been anemic at most. I mean, we've had, you know, hundreds of red shirts of different people come up and speak about this. The last thing, overall contribution to the enhancement of the neighborhood character and the environment of San Carlos in the long term. Again, I will just say, these buildings are like 1001 Laurel Street. I have not talked to anybody that thinks that that is a good development, that that is in the character. I'd just like to discuss a few quick things. First of all, property tax. I asked at the last meeting that the Planning Commission look into the difference between property tax income on if these were condominiums as opposed to apartments. Also, the fact that this is on publicly-owned land. What kind of tax breaks do SAM Trans and the Joint Powers Board get? Are they paying property tax on this land? Or is it just going to be the sticks that are built? That has never been looked at. The FIA, I've combed through, combed through. There's hardly anything in that, and the Planning Commission needs to ask that. It hasn't been asked yet. Grants. What kind of grants are there available? I asked the Planning Commission that, too. Nobody has asked about that. What process do we have to go through to get grants based on this? The RDA is gone. I said the RDA was going to be gone in these meetings. And Al Savae stood up in our first meetings that we had and touted that RDA funds were going to come in, into millions of dollars for this project, and they're gone now. But we're still supposed to buy this project.
Tim, can you wrap it up?
Yeah, I'm almost done. ABAG California Housing Mandates. So through 2022, we're looking at implementing over 130% of the mandated housing in San Carlos within the next few years if this goes through. Why 130%? Just because we want to have as much as possible? Somebody mentioned that, you know, it's looking more and more like Samhail, looking more like Redwood City. It's just not in the character. Heightened density, we talked about that. The last thing I would just want to mention is traffic. Also, as far as the benefits, what I'm seeing the benefits that we're getting from this is the removal of two lanes on northbound El Camino right at Holly Street. I have no idea how we're going to avoid gridlock there. Because when you take away those two lanes, no left-turn lane and only one right-turn lane, that traffic's going to back up. And if you look at the map of this, you'll see that there is traffic that comes right out within like 50, 100 feet going north. The last thing I just want to ask is, this is from the draft EIR. It basically says that it's estimated that the project would generate about 2,800 daily trips with 145 trips occurring in the AM peak hour, 202 trips in the PM peak hour. So 145, 202. Now, the latest document says that mitigation measure TR 5.1 requires implementation of parking and transportation demand management program to reduce the number of project trips to less than 100 in the peak hour. With these trip reductions, the traffic and parking impacts would be less insignificant. How are we going from 202 and 145 down to less than 100? What's the difference there? We can't have it both ways. So is it the EIR, which you guys have already approved, or is this mitigation measure TR 5.1? Is that, how is that going to be implemented? That needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. And Chris. Chris Whitman? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Chris Whitman. I live at 1943 St. Francis Way, and mine will be much briefer and more general. I think I'm going to be the fourth person saying positive things about the project tonight. First, I would like to suggest that we should consider ourselves fortunate that housing is the principal use proposed for the site, because housing does produce significantly less traffic than the alternatives would, which would be either office or retail, which actually could be more valuable to develop. Further vehicle ownership and usage seem to be one of the ways the world is different after 2008, as millennials in particular are showing a lower propensity for vehicle ownership and a higher propensity for transit usage and vehicle sharing for cost, lifestyle, and ethical reasons. This, in fact, is what is going to help Caltrain perform better in the future for all people in San Carlos. Second point, and I just have three points. I believe the developer and the architect have made a good, good-faith effort to taper the four-story elements of the buildings, just like the condominium project across the street here, which seems, over time, to be more acceptable to the neighborhood here than when the project was first proposed. If units were further eliminated, this would cause the remaining units to have to be less affordable and more of a challenge for our children wishing to return to the area for whom single-family houses are no longer a first option, for our parents who are becoming stranded in their houses but do not wish to move in with us, and for our public employees who provide us our basic services. Third, and finally, although this should not necessarily be a basis for your decision, clustering people where you want them to live in terms of proximity to services and transit has actually worked in San Carlos to increase economic activity and property values, which is contrary to the fears that people, that we typically naturally have about this kind of change. So in conclusion, the opportunity that you have to bring new life to north El Camino and smart housing to San Carlos is very exciting, and I encourage you in the work that you have ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, I have Susie. And then after Susie, I have Nancy.
Hello.
Hi.
Susie McKee, 307 Old County Road. Does that tell you anything? Okay, so I'm sort of singing the same song I sing every time about this, but I still think they're all valid points. One of them is, you know, if and when high-speed rail actually comes around, what on earth is going to happen? Second point is Holly Street, which is a nightmare anyway, and it's going to be just so much more of a nightmare during the building. I don't even know what's going to happen. And, you know, the hospital is, the Palamalta Medical Center thing is definitely moving along, so I don't know when it's slated to open, but I think we'll see, it'll be very interesting to see what happens when that opens. I still, I mean, I know that everybody says it's not feasible, but if you just moved it south to the Christmas trees and the pumpkins lots, and I know that's not wide enough for what people want, but to me, that would solve all the problems. The other problem is going to be the parking for, even though, yes, all, you know, the positive comments have definite value, but the thing is, they're not taking into consideration some of the details that those of us who live there have to think about. So the fact that the parking is moving, yes, it's not a big deal in some ways, but what happens is people will park in the neighborhoods because it's closer, unless there's something done about that very particularly. So these are all little issues that you wouldn't really know unless you lived there, most likely. And the other one, to me, is noise, because I get it anyway, and I don't even know what they're going to get. And I've got double-pane windows, and I'm not on the very end. The people on the very end have cracks in their walls from the vibrations of the trains. So, you know, these are just issues that, from living in that area. It won't hinder my view, but then I don't have one anyway, so. But I do see how it'll hinder my neighbors' views, so. So that's all I want to say. Thank you very much. Let me just look for a second, see if I missed anything. Oh, just to say that the rental vacancy rate is particularly bad right now. I mean, I think it's, this area is supposed to be the worst in the country in terms of high rents, and that's a lot of it because of what's going on with the whole lot. It isn't going to be that way forever, so that's all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Susie.
Nancy? And then after Nancy, I have Michael. And after Michael, Renata.
Nancy Zeebergs, 979 Springfield Drive. A couple of things that have come to my attention as people have talked, and one of them is, with the reduction in the sizing, the height, and so forth, it would be of interest to know if that has reduced the number of units or is just the size, and has it changed the pricing of the units? And if we could hear a recap of what the pricing is going to be on the units? That would be of interest to all.
I'll ask that.
Okay. I'm still concerned about access from southbound El Camino into the driveways for Buildings 1 through 4. If they all have to make a U-turn at Holly to come back, I can only see that as being problematic with bad traffic on El Camino during the busiest hours anyway. They talked about walking or the distance... They talked about walking or the distance from the parking lot to the train access. How does that compare to walking distance from building 1 to the train access? And is that going to, do they see that as being any kind of a problem for normal access? And talking about high-speed rail and electrification. If the electrification is going to be a done deal, is that going to be accomplished prior to the building of any units? If it is not, how will that be accomplished afterwards? And how will it affect Old County and the residents along Old County? And I would still like to hear how high-speed rail is going to be accomplished with those buildings there without affecting Old County and those of us along Old County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Just because I don't know if she's going to come back for the next meeting. The answers to most of your questions are on page 11 of the board memo. They break down the number of units that there were before and the number that there are now. I don't think we've ever been told the prices of the units.
We were at one meeting.
Is that right?
They did talk about it at one meeting.
I would assume they're all market rates.
They're all market rates.
So it's going to depend upon the market rate at the time that they're built, I would assume.
It's in the FIA.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, I have Michael, and then Renata, and then Steve.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Staudner. I'm from Prospect Avenue in San Carlos, which is on the west side. And I've been around San Carlos since 1954. And I've also been in the real estate business and development business for about 30 years. And complicated is the least I could say about this process. And I've never been a fan of public agencies or government being in the real estate business. And I think what we have here are multiple agencies. We have a transit agency that's in the development business all of a sudden. But more importantly than that, what we have is, I've never seen a developer and owner not communicate with its neighborhood. And we see that tonight. And I've seen it for the last six or eight years on TV, is watching a group of new activists who are people that just live in San Carlos, but all of a sudden, they have to get involved because this organization is, they're counting on you, and then they're counting on the city council. And I think the city council just recently made a very nice ruling when they said, wait a second, this is actually a public agency that's doing this. If they can't get the 15% affordable housing, which personally, I don't believe in the idea of affordable housing because it's simple math, I don't know how you do it. But since there is an ordinance to that, and since Legacy and SAM Trans has known about it for 10 or 15 years, if you don't, as a planning commission, demand from them, hey, partner, it's 15%, or you're not going forward from this day forward. It's just that simple. This is a public agency, for crying out loud. And they, of all people, I can see where a private developer would tell you, hey, I can't afford to do that. But this isn't even their money. So I would ask you to, go ahead and approve the project. I don't have a problem with that. But man, get that housing built. I don't even know who the heck's going to move into it. But get it built. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Next, I have Renata. And after Renata, I have Steve. After Steve, I have Patty.
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name's Renata Pierce, and I live on Inverness. I've lived in San Carlos now for 19 years. And I've been coming to many of these meetings, not all of them. I've listened to all the comments. I spent all of last night and this morning reading through the 278-page document. And some of my concerns are statements that have been made in previous meetings and tonight. If I have the name right, Mr. Fitzpatrick. One of my concerns is that I keep hearing the word "city, city, city." What about the community and what our desires are? It has been said both by Mr. Fitzpatrick and the first gentleman that spoke in agreement with the position that nobody needs to live there, nobody's required to live there. Well, I do live there, and I don't have a choice in this matter. And that's a problem, that our voices are not being heard. One of the things that I did as I was going through the documents is, on page 248, where it has the number of units. I'm a little bit of an Excel wizard, so I ran up and created a chart, and I apologize that I don't have a copy for everybody. One of the things I looked at is 280 units, which has 545 bedrooms in those 280 units. And looking at the number of parking spots of, in the one-bedrooms, it's 115 units, one spot per unit. For the two-bedroom units, it's 186 bedrooms, but each location is only allowed 1.5 parking spots. In the three-bedroom unit, there's a total of 43 units in the six buildings, and again, they are only allowed 1.5 parking spots. If the numbers, the dollar figures that we've been told in the past in terms of the rents, the three-bedroom, approximately $3,700, I'm assuming that's going to actually be two adults and maybe a child. The likelihood that they're going to have 1.5 cars and be allowed only .25 in terms of a visitor's spot, I have a concern with. So I ran some other numbers. What I see it being, with those 280 units, which is equivalent to 545 bedrooms, I see there needs to be 652 parking units. The specs are only allowing for 439 if we take in the visitor and the units themselves. So that's a difference of 213 units. I think that needs to be looked at. Overall, I know that there needs to be something that should be put into that space. I'm not in complete opposition. I think there's some very good parts to it. I would like to see the overall structure down to three floors, and that's it, or three and a half if we're counting the parking. The issue about the referendum, depending upon how this goes, I plan to participate very heavily in that referendum because I believe the community, the entire community, not just East San Carlos, but the entire community should have the ability to vote on this subject matter. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, I have Steve Divney, and then followed by Patty Mersters.
Good evening. And welcome, new Commissioners. Thanks for volunteering. I know you guys are all highly-paid volunteers. And I heard a comment about a 10:30 stop. What happened to the old days? Midnight, 1:00 AM? Come on.
Nope.
I will be brief. I will be brief. I think the findings are consistent and can be met, and I urge you to recommend approval on not only CECL but also the PD. I think you have a good opportunity to lead the way by making this decision and recommendation for city council. This is a multi-generational tone setter. I think it increases the size of the pie for people to come into our community and be active volunteers like you, active members of our audience, and really enjoy the benefits that San Carlos has as a community. This transit village would be another facet to the jewel that we do call San Carlos. And to echo what Chris Whitman had said, being in commercial real estate, I love to see train-centric office space. We, I love to see that. I do a lot of work in Redwood City, and the downtown is on fire. They're building 1,500 new residential units in downtown Redwood City. That's activating all the retail. It's activating the office. It's very vibrant. Love to see that come to the depot area. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Now I have Patty Mersters.
A lot of comments that I came up with have just been iterated. So, hi, I just decided to come and say hello to my husband.
Probably the only place you can see him.
Yeah. We're going to have a talk now. So what I would like you guys to do is stop calling it a village. It's no longer a village. There's no affordable housing. There's, it's high-income housing, and it's separate from the amenities. Sorry. Yeah. So the other thing is, somebody talked about having the, maybe restaurants, maybe Starbucks. Those places already in San Carlos generate a lot of garbage. So that, to me, I noticed somebody said that more garbage management was a mitigating thing, so I would hope that you make sure that happens. Also, something that didn't come up in the EIR is wind. And the wind that comes down El Camino will take whatever garbage is there and not capped and spread it all around. And already, that happens on the east side. You see stuff coming out of, I don't know, people like put their tops down and clean out their cars on Old County or what. But there's a lot of garbage in the gutters. The other thing, that looks to me like there's bricks crossing El Camino at San Carlos. In Redwood City, in like the '60s, '70s, '80s, they put bricks in their crosswalks and they got all chewed up. We have bricks in some of the driveways in San Carlos, and they got all chewed up. Please, don't put bricks in the road. Also, I would like, maybe this is not the place, but at the Drake Building, there is some kind of water or something underneath the corner there. That corner just collapses, sinks every winter or every couple of winters. And I don't know how you can fix it, but Caltrans, I think, is the agency, they're never able to fix that. So if you really put bricks there, it's really going to be messed up. Some of the proponents have mentioned we should have a vision. And we do. We need a vision to make our city better. But when the east side, when the, when the east side has brought up the vision of high-speed rail, we are told, hey, that's too far in this future. It's not that far in the future. It's very early in the 100-year life of this thing. And one of the previous speakers did mention, what happens if we get electrification? What happens if we get high-speed rail? You're really telling me you had to get rid of all of those buildings north of El Camino, north of Holly, so that you could build a shoe fly, but you're going to have enough room to do the high-speed rail or electrification? I don't believe it. And I think it stresses the, it makes it hard to believe. So I think that's it. I'd like to know how many of you guys went to the west side specific plan meetings? I didn't go either, so I wasn't there. But I did go to east side specific plan meetings, and I went to the visioning meetings. And I guess the staff that was there has like moved on because they would have known, they would have been able to tell these guys that there's going to be opposition. People, not just from the east side, but people from the west side, don't want a lot of high buildings on El Camino. They didn't want to look like San Mateo. And maybe there were only 60 people who showed up out of the whole 30,000, 25,000 people who live in San Carlos. But the people who did show up, there was a fair number, who did not want high buildings like San Mateo on El Camino. Also, there are people who are from Redwood City, Redwood Shores, who showed up and said, look, this is going to make it hard for me to come into San Carlos where I shop. So...
Patty, are you able to wrap it up?
I think I'm done. That would be it.
Thank you.
I'm against it. I hope you guys vote against it, or at least bring it down to three stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Our final speaker card is Julia Zares. Did I say that right?
Julia Zares.
Zares. Thank you.
So my name is Julia Zares, and I live at 1035 McQ. And I just wanted to reiterate a couple of the comments that I've heard tonight. I'll be very brief as the last speaker. There's been a lot of comment about long-range vision, and that is your job. That as a resident of San Carlos, I see that as your primary job. And so my main concerns in terms of long-range vision, wrong-range vision, are with affordable housing and with the planning for SAM Trans' needs for electrification and high-speed rail. The first representative talked about how the original use for this land was for the construction requirements for the berm. And we know that the electrification is coming very soon. High-speed rail may or may not come. But it's not clear where the construction and staging will occur when either or both of those things happen. And then I also just wanted to note, there's been a lot of comments about train-centric development. I think that's fantastic. I've lived in a lot of very large cities, some which do and do not have train-centric and the ability to use public transportation. And what I had never really connected was that, yes, there are not enough trains stopping at San Carlos to really make this a truly train-centric living place, or residential area. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Julia. Okay, that was our last speaker card. So, and correct me if I'm doing this procedurally and accurately, but I believe now I can go ahead and close the public comment and then have the Commission ask questions? Or do I have, do I have the staff in Legacy respond to some public comment before I close it?
Traditionally, after the public has finished commenting on the process, the Commission, the Chair of the Commission entertains a motion to close the public hearing. And then after that, you move on to discussions and Q and As with the staff and the developer.
Okay. And that includes if we are asking questions in response to some of the public comment?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Well, then can I go ahead and entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
If this goes to a following meeting, which my assumption is that in the next 25 minutes, we're not going to approve or disapprove of this plan, won't we just have to reopen the public hearing?
You do not have to reopen the public hearing at a subsequent meeting where you're continuing it after you've closed the public comment. If the Commission's desire is to have the public comment period remain open, you would not close the public hearing tonight, and then you would allow the public comment to continue at the next meeting. Well, there's a...
Presumably, there's a third option. We could close the public hearing now.
And reopen it.
And if really, really good reason occurred to reopen the public hearing, we could then move to reopen the public hearing.
Well, that's not recommended because this was a notice in the paper, and once we close it, if we continue it without reopening it, then we would, we'd have to republish. And there's an expense entailed in that. So my advice is always to, if the desire of the Commission is to keep it open, to allow more public comment at a future meeting, then you should not close it. But traditionally, you don't deliberate until after you've closed the public comment.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it to you guys, then. Do you want to go ahead and ask questions while keeping the public comment open, particularly in response to some of the questions that were raised during public comment? Or would you like to close it?
Maybe I'll just make a motion to close the public hearing, and then if there's a second, we can discuss it.
Good enough for me?
So I shall move.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor of closing?
Well, let's have a discussion.
I mean, I have no problem keeping public hearing open if there's a reason. I mean, we've had, I don't even know how many meetings, and we've heard lots and lots of public comment, unless we're going to anticipate, you know, more public comment that we haven't heard in the past. I don't see any downside in closing. I mean, although it may require republishing, and although I don't anticipate needing to do it, if like something that we completely cannot anticipate comes up, we could, you know, reopen the public hearing. I don't think we would, because, I mean, I don't, does anyone have any reason to believe there's going to be more public comment that hasn't happened yet? there's gonna be more public comment that hasn't happened yet?
No, I was just really trying to figure out if, if we would have to reopen it if we didn't get through everything tonight. So, my initial question was really trying to figure out whether, because in the past, we've sort of reopened public comment at, at subsequent meetings. And so, the question was, why close it if we're going to have to reopen it in the future? And it sounds like we don't have to reopen it in the future.
You do not have to reopen it. And because it's continuation of this particular item, you do not have to reopen it, the public comment, if you're not completed with your deliberations.
Okay.
But, but if, at this point in the evening, with apparently 20 minutes left, you have the option, I, I mean, I'd reluctant to have you close it and then feel like, well, maybe we will open it up, and then we have to go through the exercise of having another set of motions. It's just a sentiment of the commission at this point. You think you've heard from the public, everyone who's here tonight has had an opportunity to submit a card and make their points, and then, so it's up to you whether you want, you're ready to proceed to the next step.
One last question. If, for example, a, a group like the Sierra Club submitted another letter, would we still consider that even if we've closed the public comment period?
Yes, I think you can in writing because it's not the same category. It's, it's something in writing submitted, and it'll be, become part of the record.
So, that's true for pretty much any, any individual, any organization?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we have a motion?
We do have a motion in a second. So, any other, any further discussion on closing public comment? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All those opposed? All right, public comment is closed. At this point, what I'd like to do is give staff and legacy the opportunity to respond to some concerns that were brought up during public comment. I did my best to keep notes, but I hope, I hope my fellow commissioners also did their best to keep some notes on some of the issues that were raised, that we give staff and, and legacy a chance to respond. So, I'm gonna go ahead and go through mine, and then everybody can just go ahead and jump on in at this point. Let's see. Hold on, I just want to make sure I was, I was making the right thing. I'm sorry, hold on, I can barely understand my own notes.
Do you want me to start while you...
Could you?
Okay, parking. So, whoever wants to answer my questions regarding parking, would that be you? Okay, so, I'm, I'm actually, there's so much material, and maybe I, maybe I shouldn't be confused, but I am confused. Okay, so, first, there's 60 spaces on El Camino that are gonna go away, right? Gone.
You're talking about the spaces that are from Holly South?
I think mostly, I mean, maybe there's some, yeah, Holly South, along El Camino, right now where everyone parks their cars that they're trying to sell. Yes, those spaces, they're all gone, right?
San Carlos Avenue, South.
Okay. So, to replace those spaces, I see two things in, in the, in the memos, but they're not always both there, and I'm not sure which ones are replacements and which ones are required and which ones are proposed. So, there's the 47 short-term parking spaces that are gonna be in the lot. Now, I originally thought those were for anybody to use, but then in looking at page nine of the, oh my God, there's like so many, there, everything's paginated, but, you know, there, there's a, there's a portion that talks about the spaces and suggests that those 47 spaces are only for people who are using buildings seven and eight. So, can you please clarify, who can use those 47 spaces as currently proposed?
The, the project includes 47 spaces that will be time-limited, and they are available on a non-exclusive basis to the people in, in building seven and eight, customers coming there, as well as people coming for any other reason.
So, it's not, it's not like in a, in a Wells Fargo where you go to the bank and it says you have to be a customer of Wells Fargo to use it. Anyone can use those spaces?
That's correct.
That's the proposal?
And the 47 spaces that'll be time-limited are part of, they're included in the count of the 226 spaces in the commuter lot.
Okay. And then there are also portions that talk about the 100 spaces that, that SAM Trans is gonna make available to the city. Now, is the city gonna have to pay for those spaces, or what is the, what's the deal with those spaces?
The deal with those spaces is to help with downtown, and, you know, there's, there's pressure in the downtown for parking, and so we were looking for a solution to, it was more of an opportunity to provide some additional downtown parking, and SAM Trans agreed to allow the city to have those spaces for free, for free parking, and in fact, the city could use it in any, any way that the city wanted to, in the evenings after 5:00 PM or on weekends and holidays. So, the intent is to use it for, again, free public parking, those 100 parking spaces.
Okay. And so, are the provision of those 100 parking spaces as well as the 47 spaces that are going to be time-limited, are they currently reflected by, for example, improvement measures or something that is going to actually lock SAM Trans and/or Legacy in on those spaces? And can you point me to where in these documents I can find those requirements?
Sure. On the 100, I can refer to that, and perhaps Colette can refer to the 47, but the 100 is a condition of project approval.
Okay.
So, that's how it's codified, and that's how they're on the hook to provide that. There would be maybe some, a further mechanism later that, an agreement that SAM Trans and the city would enter into in terms of the specific use and timing and the details of that. But it's a condition of project approval.
Okay. And the 47?
If you give me a second, I can give you a number, but there is a condition of approval that requires, as a condition of project approval, that, that agreement be entered into as a condition of the project. So, that we're not just sort of saying it's going to be, there'd have to be a written agreement between the mixed-use developer, Legacy, and SAM Trans that would make those spaces available. And I'll just, if you give me a second, I'll find it.
Sure. You know, other folks can...
Right.
Can go ahead while they're doing that.
Angela, can I suggest that we deal with the issues that Dimitri brought up with the East Side Connect project and shuttles? As that project is moving ahead on September 28th is the actual groundbreaking of that project.
I think, I think that's fair. Just Greg, correct us if we're going too far out of our scope, but yes, I think that that makes sense.
So, so, because shuttles are a piece of this project, for roughly the last 12 years, I've dealt with shuttles on the east side. I don't know how many times I've called Brian and talked to him, or had residents of the east side call and try and deal with the shuttles for Caltrain over and over again. They just seem to not be able to not go down the residential streets. Every time there's a new driver, the, the company changes. Every single time, those shuttles race down the residential streets. I've asked for all kinds of things over the years. It just has not seemed to work. I was dismayed, actually, tonight to see that the plan that was studied for the shuttle route, if you actually look at that, and Dimitri pointed it out, and I didn't actually get it until he, he actually, till I looked at the map, and by the way, I'd really appreciate a full set of plans for the East Side Connect. It doesn't even show half of the streets as part of the East Side Connect. I didn't, I asked for a complete set of plans as part of this project for the East Side For landscaping, I, it just doesn't cut the mustard. In this case, if the shuttles come up east San Carlos in the afternoon, there is no way that they can get to the shuttle stop. That's a total oversight when you're looking and you're studying shuttles, that the plan for those shuttle route is not even feasible. And I look at that, and I combine that with the, the poor response from Caltrain and SAM Trans over the years in dealing with shuttles. And for me, there's absolutely no way that I can allow shuttles to stay on the east side. The other thing that really bothers me is that shuttle stop is wide enough for two shuttles. We're talking about potentially five shuttles using that shuttle stop. And that same shuttle stop is the only location for a kiss-and-ride on the east side. So, if two people drop off somebody or sit there for a couple of minutes and try and wait, there's no way that those shuttles can actually get to the train station on the east side. They'd have to block traffic in dropping off the passengers, which, as, as I saw from Dimitri's pictures, it, and I see it every time I ride the train, those shuttles are actually blocking Old County so bad that traffic has to cross the double-yellow line. We've tried things on the east side. We've tried putting up signs that say, no vehicles over 2,000, 2,000 pounds. We've tried all kinds of ways to deal with the shuttles. None of them have worked. The only thing that is going to work is to move those shuttles.
Can I ask then, Al, if this is appropriate, then can the Planning Commission make it a condition of approval to move the shuttles?
Absolutely.
To the west side? I mean, is that within our purview?
I will, can I answer this question? I had a long discussion with Omar Ahmad at one point, and he said, the Planning Commission and the city council can put any, any condition they want on a project, okay? It's up to the developer whether they want to develop here or not. But we can put any condition we want on the project.
Right, and I, and I would agree with you with the, I just, I was wondering with the East Side Connect if we were talking about two different things.
There's, there's absolutely no reason we can't put a shuttle condition that they go to the, to the west side.
All time shuttle station.
Will use that same piece of, of real estate that's there, that it will only be a kiss-and-ride instead of a shuttle stop.
If I could clarify, and we, we also have our Public Works Director here this evening that can talk a little bit about East Side Connect and the intent, but I think that a couple of things I'd like clar, or at least one thing I'd like clarification on is Commissioner Marsters, you mentioned the routes that the shuttles would take where they're currently proposed in East Side Connect. I'm not quite sure I understood, you said that if they came back, is it coming back down?
I'm looking at your map and, and the, the plan from Hexagon, okay?
Uh huh.
So, Hexagon plans on bringing the shuttles up east San Carlos Avenue in the afternoon, right?
Going in an east direction? Is that? Oh, in a west direction?
Okay, so, if you look at the afternoon commute shuttle routes, okay? And you see that they go south on Industrial, they come up San Carlos Avenue, they head south, and then they get down Branston. When you look at the plan from the East Side Connect, the shuttle stop is actually right across from McQ, which is north of east San Carlos Avenue. So, there's no way that those shuttles could get there, even if they went up and went up the residential street of McQ. They would actually have to go up Holly Street in order to get over to that.
Understood, yeah. Good point.
So, this plan here doesn't work at all, okay? Based on what you're already doing for East Side Connect.
Right. Okay, if I could respond to that?
Sure.
Couple of, two things. The mechanics of that are that, one, there could be an alternate route as suggested by Mr. Vandeloos. I think that was something that was creative. So, other routes could be assessed, evaluated with SAM Trans and the consultant. Secondly, I think in looking at the, the nature of where the shuttle area is, I think you're right. If, in the evening, if it was coming the other direction, you're right. There is no shuttle stop to the south of the crossing at east San Carlos. However, theoretically, you could add another shuttle area to the south of east San Carlos, and perhaps the Public Works Director could let us know if that's feasible or not. That would solve that problem at least. So, perhaps Mr. Walter could answer that question.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. As Mr. Seve has, has correctly just stated now, the area that has, that is directly adjacent to the, the train station on Old County Road as part of the East Side Connect project will actually be bulbed out. Currently now kind of bulbs in, and that's where the shuttles and the taxis sit. And as part of the project, the shuttle bay has been placed kind of on the north end of where the Caltrain station is, but we currently have room on the south end. There are parking spaces which are going to remain, and so several of those parking spaces could be configured for shuttle stops if we needed to do that. So, the physical room is there just south of the station to be able to accommodate a couple more shuttles, if that was the route that the shuttles continued to take. But as Mr. Seve has also mentioned, the shuttles could be reconfigured. We can talk to them about different routes, things like that. So, I think there's a couple options in this.
And I think the distance for the shuttles, at least on the north side, looks like more than two. I think that, you know, it's easily, you know, 40 or 50 feet, I think. And I think it could accommodate, you know, at least three, at the very least, three shuttles, if not four. And as they, as you know, they come and go. So, there could be likelihood that there would be four at one time, is possible.
But there's no kiss-and-ride.
That's, that's a good point on that side. There never has been, but it would be a good addition.
That is actually what that area that is being bulbed out now, that is supposed to be and has been labeled as kiss-and-ride, and was the original intent for that area 12 years ago when they put the berm in place. Okay? So, that was the original intent, was that that was going to be a kiss-and-ride. That was not designed for shuttles back then. It was designed so people could actually drop off passengers and pick up passengers on the east side. And the problem is that nobody can get there because you're dealing with the taxes, taxis, and you're dealing with the shuttles. So, you know, if, if you want to deal with parking, all of these individuals who, you know, stop in the middle of the street and let people out, there's, as Mr. Vandeloos said, there's a huge safety issue with these shuttles and, and way they are, not only at the station, but as they go up and down the streets in the neighborhood. And nothing that the city has done, nothing that Caltrain has done, nothing that SAM Trans has done, has stopped that in any way. And all I see is the, the location of the shuttles has moved slightly north, but nothing in this plan addresses the fact that those shuttles continue to go up and down the residential streets. And if they're moved to the west side, then they don't have an opportunity to go up and down the residential streets.
Do you want to?
I'm just, I'm just looking at the clock, if, if it's the commission's desire to extend the meeting or to adjourn to a future meeting. We do have some business that the staff usually does at this point, so... We do have some business that the staff usually does at this point, so if you're, if you'd like to continue on this, you should continue, because I think you have a resolution that you're going to end your meetings at 10:30?
We'd need a vote of at least three members of the Commission.
My inclination would be at least to take care of that question on the shuttles, and then adjourn. No, just Scott's question, not the entire Commission's question.
No, no, I'm not even worried about that, I'm just like resolving Scott's concerns about the shuttles, you, we're going to do that?
Not resort, not resolving it, I'm going to finish asking his question, his question and comment on it.
How long do you think you're going to need to finish your, I don't want to rush you, Scott, is my, is my thing. I want you to have as much time as you need.
Let's extend the meeting for, I figure you have five minutes of, of talking, five minutes of, of.
We'll put a timer on, yeah.
Commission comments.
We can extend it, and then if we need to, we can continue the discussion, which is probably going to be necessary.
It's going to be necessary, but I think we can extend it for 15 minutes?
I'd be in favor of that, but that's up to you guys. I'm an idol.
Sure. Why? I mean.
We don't have to.
You, it's fun, I just, I mean, I, I don't see anything being resolved. We're going to come back, we're going to be here for at least another day, if not more. I mean, I, if you actually thought you could resolve your comments in 10 minutes without feeling rushed, I'd be like all over that. But I just don't, do you think that's likely?
Probably not.
Okay, so, let's, you know.
Fair enough.
My, my wife would like me to get home, your wife is probably here somewhere. So, I think I would make a motion to extend the meeting five minutes to complete the business of the, of the, of the meeting, if that's okay?
Complete the staff business of the meeting.
Staff business of the meeting.
Okay, if, I would second that.
I just wanted to respond to the Commissioner's question about the parking.
Yes.
And very quickly, in the conditions of approval on page nine, of the conditions of approval, in section B, condition number seven, requires that the developer and Samtrans have to enter into a written agreement, ensuring that those spaces will be made available, those 47 short-term spaces. Have you found it?
You know what, I don't want to make everyone wait while I find it. I've got it, conditions of approval, page nine.
And then the condition about the parking lot, the 100 spaces, that's on page 16.
Also of the conditions of approval?
Conditions of approval, and that's number six in part C.
We still have a motion to extend the meeting five minutes?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, let's go ahead and extend it five minutes. I believe the first order of business is to continue this.
Yes.
Item until, to the 30th.
So, moved.
Okay.
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, okay, so we'll go ahead and continue this item on the 30th, and at this point, we'll go ahead and move down the agenda to some staff business. We have reports, correspondence, and general information. Do we have any reports on City Council actions?
At the last City Council meeting, the City Council moved to deny the waiver for the BMR units that was requested by the developer, Legacy Partners, for this project.
Thank you. Any other, any other City Council items? Okay, Planning Commission reports or comments? Okay, correspondence? And finally, planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects?
Couple of things, couple of updates. The downtown parking study is going to our City Council on the 23rd, and it's the data that we, we collected for the downtown. We'll be presenting that data to the City Council and seeing if there's enough information there to move forward with some other ideas, how we could improve our parking in the, in the downtown. So, the first phase is just the data, second phase would be trying to solve some, some issues that are out there, and so that'll be the 23rd. Couple of things coming forward to the Planning Commission, Sprint Wireless Communication, a modification to an existing facility at 260 Shelford, coming, we're targeting October 7th Commission meeting. And then the three-unit mixed-use project at 934 Laurel that the Planning Commission reviewed recently is likely to return to the Commission on October 21st, and that concludes my comments.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a question? There's two other things that I think I remember hearing about. One is tomorrow night, there's a meeting on the Holly Street.
101?
101?
Interchange?
Interchange, isn't that tomorrow night?
Transportation and Circulation Commission at 7:00 PM, yes.
And then the 28th is the groundbreaking for the East Side Connect project.
Right, Saturday, the, it's a Saturday, the 28th at 9:00 AM, and that would be at the, I believe, right at the station at the Historic Depots, where everybody's going to.
They're not going to shut down Old County Road for that, are they?
No, not, that's, I don't think so. I haven't heard that.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.